Non-Kirchhoff Road related, when you drop your children off or your children walk through Ward 5 at the high school, it is really important that you follow standard safety. This week alone, I've witnessed multiple bicyclists and e-bike riders driving past stop school buses with stop signs out on Linden. Young kids are not trained to look for bicycles, they're looking for cars. So, when we have elementary school children being dropped off who are crossing the street and you are not following the rules of the road, which, after speaking with manager Sabo, verified to me, e-bikes and bikes that are riding in the street have to stop for school buses. If the arm is out, you should be stopping unless you are on the sidewalk. It is very important that our elementary school children are protected from people using bicycles and cars on the streets. I'm sure it happens in other areas, I just happen to see it out my window as I work from home. So, just a reminder to parents that to tell your children they are not the only ones on the road and to be cautious of those around them. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other award reports this evening? Okay, then, we do have signatories on the sign-in sheet this evening. Tonight's agenda includes the council's vote to amend the city's comprehensive plan to adopt the Kirchhoff Road corridor study either as-is, which would include the transportation recommendation, or amended in part. And as you've heard from our council members this evening, I know there has been a great deal of discussion in our community around this project, and I sincerely appreciate the engagement. The city council and I have received your emails, your phone calls, and other communications, and it is very clear to us that there are strong and varied opinions on the transportation recommendations specifically. Spirited debate is a part of democracy. At the same time, it is my responsibility as mayor to ensure that our discussions remain respectful and orderly. While we may not always agree, we can and must engage with one another civilly. Disagreement is welcome, disrespect and threatening behavior is not. We're adults here, and the council and I want to hear from you, and your neighbors want to be heard as well. So, in order to secure the rights of the citizens of the city to a fair and just representation before their elected officials this evening, and to guarantee to the elected officials an order and dignified form in which to conduct the city's business, no person shall be allowed to engage in any activity that will disrupt or disturb the orderly proceedings of the city council. So, per the rules of procedure, the public is to address the city council, and the fact that no member of the city council responds does not mean that the city council or any member thereof agrees or disagrees with the comment. So, when you come up to make your public comment, the reason we do not respond is because the council will engage in its own discussion when the topic is on the agenda, and we will take that public comment and your public comment into consideration for that discussion. The council may request city staff to provide clarification during Club once again made clear their desire to relocate the Bears' home stadium to the Arlington Park property. I want to assure the residents that the city of Rolling Meadows has taken a proactive approach to this potential development. In May earlier this year, Rolling Meadows brought together specialists in legislative advocacy, traffic engineering, and acoustic design to strengthen its in-house team. These experts will guide the city's preparation and support at every stage of the Bears stadium project, from the review of the initial concepts through construction if it is to continue. With that, are there any ward reports this evening? Yes, Alderman Budmats.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. One second, please. I received, on August the twenty-seventh, the day following the last city council meeting, all of the council members, myself included, received an email, and I'm going to read it to you with the permission of the senator to share, because I believe it's germane to the upcoming time of public comment. To your council members, none of you know me, but I stood quietly against the wall at the meeting last night. I have lived in Rolling Meadows for just under two years, and it was my second city council meeting. I did not come to express my opinion on the Kirchhoff Road design. I do honestly do not have one. I came to get a sense of the community and to learn what I could, and I learned that I never want to serve on the city council. I want to take a moment and thank each one of you for the hard work and dedication you bring to serving our community. I know very well the struggles that come with carrying the weight of differing opinions, tough decisions, and high emotions. I know the frustration of never being able to make everyone happy, and I know the pain of realizing the people that you make sacrifices to help would rather make personal libelous attacks rather than hear what you have to say. Please remember that your service truly does matter, even when discussions are tense or outcomes are difficult. Your commitment to listening, leading, and working towards what is best for our city does not go unnoticed. You are making a difference by showing up persevering and giving of yourselves for the good of others. On behalf of many in our community, I want to express my gratitude. We are praying for you, cheering you on, and deeply appreciative of the time and effort that you give, often at personal cost for the sake of our city's well-being. Stay encouraged, you know that your labor is not in vain, with gratitude and respect. I wish to add the following thoughts. I realize that politics in Washington in the past decade has become increasingly volatile and divisive. Sadly, it seems in vogue to villainize and disrespect those who hold viewpoints in opposition to your own. But this isn't Washington, this is Rolling Meadows, and we who serve on the council are not professional politicians. We are your neighbors, who serve in what essentially amounts to a volunteer role after working all day in our vocations. Each of us on the council spends hours, several hours, to, prior to the meeting, to reading agendas, reports, reviewing budgets, as well as participating in meetings and discussions with city staff and constituents. I will state, I will state that each of us here is doing what we can to think what we do is best for Rolling Meadows, and that none of us on this council are here because we have an agenda for our own personal gain. While we may have differing opinions on the best way to do that, I believe that each of my counterparts deserves the uttermost and respect for their efforts, and that is why the personal attacks received by voicemail, email, and on social media following the last meeting are so disturbing and inappropriate. I have been quoted personally out of context villainized, had my personal safety threatened for my stances on items on tonight's agenda. During prior public comments, the integrity of the council's motivations, as well as our mental capacity, have been repeatedly questioned. I have to admit to you, as a human being, it is very difficult for me not to discount the remainder of your public comments after you question my intelligence and my integrity. After you state that you consider me to be either stupid or corrupt, I am not magically drawn to your point of view on the issue on hand. So in short, if you are looking to have your opinion respected and fully considered, kindly respect each of us on the council as people who, like yourself, with good intentions, care about the future of Rolling Meadows. We are, we on the council welcome thoughtful, knowledgeable discourse on the issues at hand. This could be Rolling Meadows' finest hour, or could be Rolling Meadows at its worst, and the termination of the issues at hand will have nothing to do with making that determination. It will be determined by how well we respect each other and hear each other out on viewpoints different than our own. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Budmats. Are there any other ward reports this evening? Alderman Kohler.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like to, I appreciate your comment, Alderman Budmats. We've all been bombarded. I think I've become a target in the city, not hostile target, but for communication. I've had hundreds, literally hundreds, more people have called, called me, or emailed me, or I've met with many of you in the past week in this, at City Hall here, or off City Hall, on the topics on the agenda today. I appreciate your input, I have heard from you, I have listened to you, and I appreciate that engagement. I haven't had any threats personally, but I do appreciate those who, many of you may be in the room, and I appreciate that, that input. So, we'll see where it goes today, and I appreciate, I have enough information. I just wanted to thank the community for the engagement. I also want to say that I have keeping, keeping track, and I can tell you that more people have contacted me in the past week and a half than voted in the last municipal election. That says something about, we've engaged our community at least. We'll see where it goes. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Kohler. Alderman Boucher.
Non-Kirchhoff Road related. When you drop your children off or your children walk through Ward Five at the high school, it is really important that you follow standard safety. This week alone, I've witnessed most, multiple bicyclists and e-bike riders driving past stop school buses with stop signs out on Linden. Young kids are not trained to look for bicycles, they're looking for cars. So, when we have elementary school children being dropped off who are crossing the street and you are not following the rules of the road, which, after speaking with manager Savo, verified to me, e-bikes and bikes that are riding in the street have to stop for school buses. If the arm is out, you should be stopping unless you are on the sidewalk. It is very important that our elementary school children are protected from people using bicycles and cars on the streets. I'm sure it happens in other areas, I just happen to see it out my window as I work from home. So just a reminder to parents that, to tell your children they are not the only ones on the road, and to be cautious of those around them. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other ward reports this evening? Okay, then, we do have signatories on the sign-in sheet this evening. Tonight's agenda includes the council's vote to amend the city's comprehensive plan to adopt the Kirchhoff Road corridor study, either as-is, which would include the transportation recommendation, or amended in part. And as you've heard from our council members this evening, I know there has been a great deal of discussion in our community around this project, and I sincerely appreciate the engagement. The city council and I have received your emails, your phone calls, and other communications, and it is very clear to us that there are strong and varied opinions on the transportation recommendations specifically. Spirited debate is a part of democracy. At the same time, it is my responsibility as mayor to ensure that our discussions remain respectful and orderly. While we may not always agree, we can and must engage with one another civilly. Disagreement is welcome, disrespect and threatening behavior is not. We're adults here, and the council and I want to hear from you, and your neighbors want to be heard as well. So, in order to secure the rights of the citizens of the city to a fair and just representation before their elected officials this evening, and to guarantee to the elected officials an order and dignified form in which to conduct the city's business, no person shall be allowed to engage in any activity that will disrupt or disturb the orderly proceedings of the city council. So per the rules of procedure, the public is to address the city council, and the fact that no member of the city council responds does not mean that the city council, or any member thereof, agrees or disagrees with the comment. So when you come up to make your public comment, the reason we do not respond is because the council will engage in its own discussion when the topic is on the agenda, and we will take that public comment, and your public comment, into consideration for that discussion. The council may request city staff to provide clarification during either that time, or separately, when discussing matters not on the agenda portion of the meeting, if you're bringing up a topic that isn't on the agenda this evening, especially if your comment requires follow-up, investigation, or additional research to answer your question, because we take the public comment very seriously and want to make sure that your questions are answered or your concerns are addressed. So, in order to obtain the objective of allowing fair and just representation before their elected officials, the following rules of conduct are hereby established. Any person who seeks to address the city council at this time for public comment shall be permitted to speak only upon recognition of the presiding officer, and such person shall adhere to the following provisions. Each person addressing the city council shall state their name for the record, and then each person shall be granted no more than two minutes, and I will extend the allotted twenty minutes to accommodate all of the signatories on the sign-in sheet in order to address the city council. Questions and or commentary shall be limited to city business. Comments supporting, supporting or opposing a nominated person's candidacy, candidacy for elective office of the city, or personal attacks or threats shall be out of order. I will remind you, and we'll stop the clock, but if that continues, then we will not stop the clock. Commentary shall be directed at the presiding officer unless the presiding officer permits the individual to address the council members or other city officers present. Discussion shall take place in a professional manner which displays mutual respect, and profanity shall not be used in any form or manner. So this now brings us to our pending items. The first item on the agenda, I'm sorry, for our signatories before we go to our pending items. The first signatory is, so we have two pages of signatories. So, my recommendation is, I'm going to name all of the signatories on the sign-in sheet, and then if you could please approach and line up behind the podium, then we'll begin. So I have Lynn V., Annette S., Jo S., Jenny B., Linda T., Dix C., Kathy R., Mario B., Mark H., Roger F., Lynn G., Betty A., Lee S., Betsy D., Dale E., Dean M., and Miranda All right, before we begin, so again, you'll state your name for the record, and then we have the clock here, which will give you your two minutes. At the end of the two minutes, we do ask then that you allow the next person to begin speaking.
Thank you. Thank you all for your service. I have two respectful points tonight to present. The first one is, last night, there was a report on Fox thirty-two Chicago News regarding the Bears' CEO letter to fans confirming yet again the intent to build a stadium in Arlington Heights. In the news report, it was stated by the Arlington Heights mayor that before the Bears' project can be started, the state of Illinois will have to figure out how to get traffic off and on Route fifty-three for the games and other events. It should be a concern that our Kirchhoff Road, even our side streets, could very well be jeopardized by the state of Illinois to accommodate Bears stadium traffic. Perhaps the state of Illinois may even choose to close off Kirchhoff Road to local traffic to allow stadium traffic access to and from Route fifty-three, or to send exiting stadium traffic east to Wilkie Road and beyond. It's something that could affect our future Kirchhoff Road corridor, it could happen. I suggest everyone checks out Fox thirty-two Chicago's website for the full report. Now, on to my main point. It's not debatable that hospital-bound and other emergency vehicles are extremely frequent on Kirchhoff Road. The five current lanes always allows a safe path for vehicles to clear the way. With the proposed three-lane configuration, picture this scenario. A fast-moving Palatine, Inverness, or Rolling Meadows ambulance on its way to the hospital, or a fast-moving fire truck, or a police car, is traveling eastbound and using the left-turning lane because there are vehicles in the single lanes. Those in the single-
Your time's up. Thank you.
Annette Zaffron. I'm opposed to reducing Kirchhoff Road to two lanes, and strongly urge you to listen to the residents of the community who joined me in opposing this idea. There have been, been many reasons presented by this council to residents, and the residents feel there is no logical reason to go backwards in time. The original reasons presented were of safety concerns and attempts to bring new business to Rolling Meadows. After hearing the results of a flawed, inaccurate, forty-thousand-dollar traffic study, it gives even more reason to oppose this idea. One resident even brought up, to your attention, which was not mentioned in the traffic study, was obstructed view if cars are parked along the road. Pulling out of the many exits along Kirchhoff with parked cars blocking clear vision of oncoming traffic will eventually result in many multiple crashes and accidents. The other focus was supposed to be at Oriole. The road diet does nothing to solve this issue. We need to focus, focus other means for safety at this intersection. There are options that could be explored, but it seems that this has only been a side issue, that a road diet will not correct. If speeding is an issue now, it won't change drivers' habits if they're limited to one lane. As a resident on Central Road, which is a two-lane roadway, I can safely tell you, it doesn't. Cars whiz in front of my home, doing thirty-five to fifty miles an hour on an average, not one or two, on an average. As for new businesses, there are few, if any, over the past five years, begging to open up along Kirchhoff Road. Rezoning cannot change this fact. The open parcels of land-
Your time's up. Thank you.
Joe Zaffron. I've, you know, been involved with, you know, the process of going to the meetings of the fire station, seeing the plan, having conversations about that when it was first presented, given my opinion then on how it didn't seem to work, or looked like it would work. Still, I'm wondering why there is no talk about the existing bike path that's already on Kirchhoff, that is more than adequate on both sides, that would just need to be extended a little bit further towards the funeral home and towards our Oriole. Looking at the traffic studies and the computer-generated diagrams that are showing traffic, that's how it works in a book. You got to remember that people don't follow the book, they're going to go different speeds, stop, it's going to throw and skew that, that timing off. The other question about safety with crossing at Oriole, even if you put in a pedestrian crosswalk, or an overpass bridge, whatever, people have to use it. They have the one over at Dwyer in Kirchhoff, and when it's activated, people get confused, they want to turn into people that are crossing, because they don't recognize that it's, you know, a crosswalk at that time. People get caught where the car in front of them is stopping short because they see the lights. The education needs to be enforced on how to even use those safety items before they just put one in. A smart stoplight would probably be the best suggestion for that corner. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, council members. My name is Jenny Burns, B.E.R.N.S., and I live on Kirchhoff Road. As we've heard the community over the past few weeks, the reduction of Kirchhoff Road is not wanted. I stand in support of the Say No petition that was provided to you yesterday with one thousand four hundred seventy-five signatures, which is now approaching sixteen hundred. Our community is more than just seven individual wards. It's made up of the people who lived here, who grew up here, our family and friends who visit, and our businesses. Neighboring communities like Palatine use Kirchhoff Road to get to the hospital. Arlington Heights uses it to get to fifty-three. Let's not forget about the commercial semis from Wilkie Road. The trend analysis provided by the survey is based on trends, not factual data, yet analysis across the industry shows that road diets might reduce accidents by six percent, which would extend the interval to forty-two point five years, which is far from the eighty-year mark. Additionally, research suggests that parking-related accidents will rise seventy percent involving pedestrians, cyclists, and vehicles. Fifty thousand dollars won't cover these changes, and as a community, we don't want to fund this idea. The money would be better spent in preparation for the new stadium and the possibility of hosting a Super Bowl in two thousand and thirty-one. Thank you.
Unfortunately, I have difficulty hearing, so I was unable, unaware of one of the aldermen's statements at the last city meeting. I believe he made a comment to the effect, even if his ward was for Kirchhoff's four lanes, he would vote against their opinion. What a pompous, arrogant statement. How dare he take it upon himself-
Excuse me, excuse me.
-after swearing an oath that he would abide by the rules of listening to the people and then voicing and taking heed of their opinion, not his. If I were in his ward, I would take steps to see that he was ousted from the office of alderman as soon as possible. And if any of the other aldermen have a mind to follow his example, please reconsider. You are all so sure that with two lanes, there will be safety on Kirchhoff. How naive. Have you considered the amount of accidents which will be caused with people backing out and cyclists on low paths, et cetera, thinking they have the right of way on the bike path? This situation is now on nextdoor.com, and I suggest you take heed of the views regarding accidents both on Kirchhoff and the bike path if this plan is adopted. I just hope the city has enough funds to cover the lawsuits.
Thank you. Excuse me.
Linda Thielen, and I think going backwards in time is a very bad thing. Going from two lanes to five lanes, back to three lanes is kind of ridiculous. I think it's a major hazard as far as safety issues. I think it's going to be against our businesses, it's going to hurt our businesses, and I think more emphasis should be addressed to what's happening at Oriole as far as lights or something there, rather than cutting the traffic down all the rest of the way through Rolling Meadows. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, Mayor, council members. My name is Mark Havel. I live on Kirchhoff Road, same side of the street as this place. So, when I go to, leave my driveway and I go west, I back out into the first lane and I go. When I go east, I back out, and I have to go over two, the two lanes coming this way into the center lane and go. Now, how, what's going to happen when you make one lane of those where people like driving their bikes and stuff? So I have to cross a sidewalk, I have to cross another lane of whatever's there to get east or west. You know, we're talking about safety, I don't see the safety in this. So I urge you all to vote against it. Thank you very much. And also, you know, I kind of, I kind of understand the process, but we're voting on some, or you're voting on something tonight that we don't even know what it is, right? I mean, there's no, what's going to happen on this lane and that lane, and nobody knows anything, except we're just voting on a idea. But it's a kind of a scary idea for a lot of residents in this town. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Roger Fox, twenty-eight oh three Owl Lane, just a few doors down. To add on to what he had just said, my understanding is there's possibly some changes to the package coming from the Planning and Zoning Commission. And not knowing how that would be accomplished and moved forward, I don't agree with that. They were talking about possibly recommending to you that we not do the parking now and maybe do it later, and, but there was no clear picture or idea on, okay, what do we do with that space in the meantime? Is it just combed off, or blocked off, or whatever? And with the unknown and possible changes, I would question the legal counsel whether or not this would really be a second reading, or if this would actually revert back to a first reading since, if you do make changes to it, because the general public wouldn't have known or seen what this is going to look like, or what the changes are. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you all in the council for serving, and I, my name is Mario Di Benedetto, I've been here since nineteen eighty-five, raised my family, two children, and my son and family still lives in Rolling Meadows, proud to be a Rolling Meadows resident. I've read through the zoning recommendations. I've, I've read through the zoning recommendations, and quite honestly, I agree with just about everything. The zoning recommendations making it attract business, pedestrian and, and bike-friendly, totally agree with that. However, I have not seen one thing that states how reducing lanes would be beneficial to all of that. I've seen what bike lanes in the city have done. Some are good, some are not that good. You have plenty of sidewalk, you have parkways, a lot of your zoning requirements say you have to have off-street parking. Now you're adding on-street parking. I'm going to really enjoy watching a suburbanite trying to parallel park on the, on the busy street. That's going to be fun. So, my recommendation, please vote no on this as it is. Come back with everything except the Kirchhoff Road so that we can continue with progress. And if and when there's a requirement to reduce it, address it at that time, because I cannot see now how it's going to help or improve EMT or police response, traffic response, access, people coming in and out of driveways. I just don't see any benefit to it, but it's jeopardizing the rest of the plan, which quite frankly is a good one. So, that's my recommendation. Vote no and come back with something without it for the time being. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Kathy Ryan, and for the sake of time, I'll just, I concur with everything that everybody has said. That's negatory to this Kirchhoff Road diet. I think it's unnecessary, it's not needed, it disrupts efficiency of flow of traffic, not only for people coming to our community, for those of us in our community. I don't want to spend ten minutes getting from my home to the jewel, because I have to wait for a spot in one lane of traffic to go east. It makes no sense. The safety factors have been discussed, they've been shared. I ride a bike, and I can well imagine what it's going to be like if I'm riding on Kirchhoff, and there's a right turn lane, and I've got the privilege to continue straight, and that car is going to go into that right lane to make his right turn, unaware of a bicycle in a lane. Kind of falls into the same idea of a suburbanite, the gentleman just said. How many of us know how to parallel park instantly, and not sit there and back up traffic while we do it once, do it twice, get it right, get it wrong? It makes no sense. The entire project, as a whole, no. The project without the transportation part is a good idea. Let's market Rolling Meadows, market for its efficiency, market for what we have now, and if there's a business that wants to come in here that doesn't fit our model as a wonderful little town, maybe it doesn't belong here.
Richard Clark, three-six-oh-two Meadow. I'm against the idea, there's a lot of ambulances and fire trucks going to Northwest Community Hospital. I think snow removal, I have daughters who live in the city, and that snow removal is a real pain. And kids opening the doors hit by oncoming cars, I can see that happening. We had a lot of- We had a lot of businesses years ago, bowling alleys, theaters, they all left because of taxes. And there already is a bike path. And schools on Meadow, the traffic would be horrendous for them when they get out. Taxes on local businesses are way too high. And a lot, there's a lot of business, restaurants on Algonquin, why aren't they coming here? Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name's Lee Shine. I live in the corridor on South Street. First, I want to say thank you to all the people sitting up at the dais. I've worked on legislation in the past, and I know what you do, and I know how hard this job is, and it's not helpful when everyone isn't cordial. I also want to say thank you to the staffs because I've been in their job and I know how hard this is. So, any of my comments today, please don't take them in any way that's negative because I know how hard this is. I think the most important comment I heard today was, "We don't know what we're voting for." No truer word was spoken. I can tell you, I went to the last meeting, I didn't speak on purpose because we were trying to learn. In that time, I have done my research. In the last 24 hours alone, I have learned that a vote no on this is a vote for higher taxes. Why? Study after study has shown that doing this exact thing to the road causes a benefit, notwithstanding all the little details. What it turns out is all these things about snow removal all get worked out, and over the next decade, taxes will go down because businesses will move in. The market makes, you can look at, and I'll tell you about some of the things I've seen in the last 24 hours. Studies from the University of Chicago, research from experts. So, I really do appreciate all the opinions in this room. I know how hard it is to live in Rolling Meadows or live anywhere today, even just wherever, no matter how much money you have. But the experts all think this is great. Some of you have seen some of these, some of this research that I've done. But a vote today, no, is a vote for higher taxes. You will not know that today, but you will know that in the next decade when there is a hole in the budget. So, I implore you, I am speaking, by the way, I cannot tell you how many people I reached out to who have kids, who are working tonight, who are in restaurants, who can, are at karate practice, who cannot come to speak. They do not even have the time to email all of you to tell them their opinion. So, just because someone has time, and I submit to you that the highest percentage of population in this town is young people who are not here, so please vote no.
Time's up. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Betsy D. Jamis. I also live in the Kirchhoff Corridor District. And I, my notes were also, I've listened to what everybody says, and I have seen every answer in the research I've done, that every question, every concern that you're voicing is valid. And it's not different than every, thousands of communities around the country that have done this. There's literally 50 years' worth of best practices done from communities that have done this, that we can pick and choose and figure out what works best to us. What we need to be concerned about, and with this, this change in our comprehensive plan in the zoning, it is not a project where you're putting money to and a shovel in the ground. The next steps, every other community has done, community outreach and focus groups and charrettes. I'm, I am a developer. I've done this my, for the last 25 years. I've made places, I've designed downtowns. I hear all of you. I've been standing there, listening to crowds like this, and I've gotten my projects rezoned. Because you take time, you listen, you look at all the assets in the community. And our objective is to make our city sustainable, economically, livably. I get that we all want to live the way we want to live, but we also have to think about the future people who are coming here. And the mayor's announcement today solidifies my support of the full plan. I want this to be a message to everybody looking at Rolling Meadows, that we care about our community, we care about the center road that's dividing two neighborhoods right now, and that we are looking for people who are going to join us in the community and not be like the Jewel Plaza that doesn't care. I don't want Taco Bells to pay their rent and don't show up. I don't want Chase Banks. I want a vibrant community.
Time's up. Thank you.
Lynn Griesmeyer, vote no and do not reduce Kirchhoff Road lanes. Has Rolling Meadows City Attorney finished the Lakota Contract Amendment yet, striking out all verbiage pertaining to reducing Kirchhoff Road's four lanes with-
Hey, you turned me off.
Verbiage pertaining to reducing Kirchhoff Road's four lanes with left-turn lane inlets. With Chicago Bears relocating to Arlington Heights, Kirchhoff Road should remain four lanes to be a welcoming community partner, allowing football fans easier access to Expressway Route 53, allowing football fans easier access to Expressway Route 53, plus non-congested road for resident, restaurant goers. That will bring more business to Rolling Meadows store owners. Keeping Kirchhoff Road four lanes at the Chicago Bears Stadium nearby will ensure new businesses come to Rolling Meadows, thus filling empty buildings, office spaces, so those businesses might be flocking to Rolling Meadows. Two separate petitions against reducing Kirchhoff Road were entrusted to the ward alderperson, hoping that these petitions were shared with each of you. Sidewalks on north and south side of Kirchhoff Road were widened, allowing for bikes and pedestrians to both share that same sidewalk. If Kirchhoff Road is reduced to make parallel parking and bike lanes, both will make Kirchhoff Road unsafe. Bikes and parallel parking passengers exiting their cars, both will be involved in accidents. Would all of you parallel park on Kirchhoff Road? Ambulances and fire trucks will be delayed along Kirchhoff Road due to left-turn blockage and the guaranteed traffic backup preventing swift arrival at hospitals or to the emergency. Get a refund from the road study that was used as a fatal accident not in Kirchhoff Road was pulled in.
Your time's up. Thank you. Thank you. Excuse me. Thank you. Proceed.
Hello, my name is Miranda Shine. I will start my statement today by asking you guys to please consider voting yes during today's meeting, even if you vote no in the meeting right after this. I don't think it's productive right now for me to argue to you guys the benefits of the plan and correct the misconceptions, but if you want to see that speech, I can deliver it after today. Right now, everyone is wondering financially, how will this road plan be implemented? Voting yes today will give the community staff the opportunity to answer that question. Voting no right now will leave it unanswered for at least a decade. You can vote no next time, it's okay. But I would not be here if I did not wholeheartedly think this plan will be the best direction for Rolling Meadows in every sector. So, it'd be super awesome if you guys could vote yes today. And thank you for all your hard work, everyone. Metropoetia.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Dale Engelking. I live in 23, 3206 Plum Grove Drive, Rolling Meadows.
You can just hold the microphone.
I can hold it. My concern is, is why, why do we need the parking along Kirchhoff Road? That's the main deal. Why we're putting in 182 spaces to go to nowhere? I mean, I'd like it if Martha Coroner would come. I mean, I haven't seen her at any of the meetings. She's our business advocate, and I'd like to ask her a couple of questions on how many businesses she's contacted. I talked to my alder lady, and I said, if, if the businesses come, I'm in all the favor of having more parking. I talked at the planning and zoning board meeting, and I had talked to them about putting storm pits in, in that detention area across the street in front of the army barracks there on the old Dominic site. You'd probably get another acre or two acres of parking there if you needed it, if they put in storm traps. They've done it at Highland Park Hospital. I personally worked on that one, where they bought up houses, put storm traps in, and they had parking over it. I've done it where they had buildings over it. But I just, you know, for the gentleman that lived in the town for two years, I've lived here a lot longer than that, and I'm sure a lot of the people on the board have lived here a lot longer. And so, there's, there's going to be good things and bad things. You know, we make good decisions and bad decisions. But I think when you take the position of an alderman and the people in your ward vote you in, that you are supposed to represent the majority of the people in your ward. And when that hap, when that doesn't happen, I don't know why we're aldermen. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Dean M. Okay, all right. This then leads us to our pending items. The first item that is pending is Item A, Ordinance Number 25-41, which is to grant a special use permit for outdoor business activities permanent in compliance with 122-76. This is for party time HDO, doing businesses pro EM, national events at 5300 Newport Drive, in for second reading. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance? Thank you Alderman Boucher for the first and Alderman O'Brien for the second. Is there any discussion regarding the approval of this ordinance this evening? Hearing none, the question is, shall the ordinance be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll? O'Brien.
Yes.
Beniziano.
Yes.
Boucher.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
Kohler.
Yes.
McHale.
Yes.
Budmats.
Yes.
With seven in favor and unopposed, this ordinance is adopted. This brings us to Item B, Ordinance Number 25-42, which is to grant a variation from the city's minimum side yard setback and floor area ratio regulations at 2806 Deerfield Court, in for second reading. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance? So moved. Thank you Alderman McHale for the first and Alderman O'Brien for the second. Is there any discussion regarding the adoption of this ordinance? Hearing none, the question is, shall the ordinance be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll? Beniziano.
Yes.
Boucher.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
Kohler.
Yes.
McHale.
Yes.
Budmats.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Beniziano.
Yes.
Boucher.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
With seven in favor and unopposed, this ordinance is adopted. Item D, Ordinance Number 25-44, to modify the city's zoning regulations to convert the city's minimum parking requirements to non-binding recommendations for most land uses and update other off-street parking regulations, in for second reading. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance? So moved. Thank you Alderman Boucher for the first and Alderman McHale for the second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, the question is, shall the ordinance be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll? Boucher.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
Kohler.
Yes.
McHale.
Yes.
Budmats.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Beniziano.
Yes.
With seven in favor and unopposed, this ordinance is adopted. Item D, Ordinance Number 25-44, to modify the city's zoning regulations to convert the city's minimum parking requirements to non-binding recommendations for most land uses and update other off-street parking regulations, in for second reading. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance? So moved. Thank you Alderman Boucher for the first and Alderman McHale for the second. Is there any discussion regarding this item? Hearing none, the question is, shall, shall the ordinance be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll? Reyes.
Yes.
Kohler.
Yes.
McHale.
Yes.
Budmats.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Beniziano.
Yes.
Boucher.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
With seven in favor and unopposed, this ordinance is adopted. For Item F, Ordinance Number 25-46, is to update the city's building regulations concerning parking lot design. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance? So moved. Thank you Alderman McHale for the first and Alderman O'Brien for the second. Any discussion regarding the adoption of this ordinance? All right, hearing none, the question is, shall the ordinance be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll? McHale.
Yes.
Budmats.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Beniziano.
Yes.
Boucher.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
Kohler.
Yes.
With seven in favor and unopposed, this ordinance is adopted. Item G, Ordinance Number 25-47, is to update the city's property maintenance regulations to incorporate enabling regulations for native landscaping, in for second reading. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance? Thank you Alderman Kohler for the first and Alderman Boucher for the second. Is there any discussion regarding this item? Hearing none, the question is, shall the ordinance be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll? Budmats.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Beniziano.
Yes.
Boucher.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
Kohler.
Yes.
McHale.
Yes.
Budmats.
Yes.
With seven in favor and unopposed, this ordinance is adopted. Item I, Ordinance Number 25-49, is to increase by one the number of available smoking lounge licenses for Al Majaz Corporation, aka Mazaji Lounge, at 5540 New Wilkie Road, in for second reading. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance? So moved. Thank you Alderman McHale for the first and Alderman O'Brien for the second. Is there any discussion regarding the adoption of this ordinance? Yes, Alderman Kohler. Any other comments or questions from the council? All right, hearing none, the question is, shall the ordinance be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll? O'Brien.
Yes.
Beniziano.
Yes.
Boucher.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
Kohler.
Yes.
McHale.
Yes.
Budmats.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Beniziano.
Yes.
With seven in favor and unopposed, this ordinance is adopted. Item D, Ordinance Number 25-49, is to increase by one the number of available smoking lounge licenses for Al Majaz Corporation, aka Mazaji Lounge, at 5540 New Wilkie Road, in for second reading. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance? So moved. Thank you Alderman McHale for the first and Alderman O'Brien for the second. Is there any discussion regarding the adoption of this ordinance? Yes, Alderman Kohler.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As I said previously in the first reading, and I will repeat it here, I am against this ordinance, even though I'm probably in the minority, I am in the minority on that, simply for the public health aspect of increasing smoking lounges in the city. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions for staff from the council? All right, hearing none, the question is, shall this ordinance be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll? Beniziano.
Yes.
Boucher.
No.
Reyes.
Yes.
Kohler.
No.
McHale.
Yes.
Budmats.
No.
O'Brien.
Yes.
With four in favor and three opposed, this ordinance is adopted. This brings us to Item J, Ordinance Number 25-50, which is to clarify the city code concerning smoking lounges and indoor smoking, in for second reading. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance? So moved. Thank you Alderman McHale for the first and Alderman O'Brien for the second. Is there any discussion regarding the adoption of this ordinance? Yes, Alderman Kohler.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, as long as we did pass that last one, we do need to clarify our smoking, indoor smoking ordinances. I did review it. It is acceptable as written, so I would recommend we proceed with this one at least.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments from the council? All right, hearing none, the question is, shall the ordinance be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll? Boucher.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
Kohler.
Yes.
McHale.
Yes.
Budmats.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Beniziano.
Yes.
Boucher.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
Kohler.
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, this ordinance is adopted. This brings us to Item K, Ordinance Number 25-51, which is to amend Chapter 106 entitled Traffic and Vehicles of the Code of Ordinances, Rolling Meadows, Illinois, in order to regulate[1650.71] This brings us to item K, ordinance number twenty-five dash fifty-one, which is to amend chapter one oh-six entitled Traffic in Vehicles of the Code of Ordinances, Rolling Meadows, Illinois, in order to regulate the use of low-speed electric bicycles within the city of Rolling Meadows, in for second reading. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance? So moved. Thank you Alderman Boucher for the first and Alderman O'Brien for the second. Is there any discussion regarding the adoption of this ordinance? Yes, Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, after past discussion and also having the representative from Wright, Illinois, join us at our Committee of the Whole meeting, I would like to move to strike the helmet regulation contained in the proposed rules for general applicability to low-speed e-bikes as set forth in section one zero six, three-five dot two, C-one-I-I, based on um state law as well as the recommendation from the official that spoke with us at the Committee of the Whole, um, I feel also from their perspective, it's a personal um decision um that we can strongly encourage, but I would like to remove the helmet requirement based on our Committee of the Whole.
Okay, I've got a motion on the floor here. I need a second in order for this to be considered.
Second.
Thank you Alderman Beniziano for the second. Is there any discussion regarding the amendment to strike the requirement for needing a helmet? Um, Alderman Kohler and then Alderman Boucher.
As I stated in previous decisions like this, I would uh recommend maintaining helmet ordinance especially for our youth.
Anything else, Alderman Kohler?
No, thank you.
Um, it, it, did you want to share if you were, would be in favor of the um striking motion or not?
If the, if, I would be voting against the amendment as it is and leave it in the the helmet requirements and.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Thank you.
Alderman Boucher.
I would have to agree with Alderman Kohler. The traffic and situations I witnessed behind the high school um with kids and safety on their bikes, I understand we're in difference with state law, but just because you're not, just because you're changing what state law is saying doesn't mean we're in the wrong. And I think that if children are going to be, or young adults are going to be riding vehicles that can go twenty to twenty-five miles an hour, they should be protecting their brains and their bodies. So I am going to uh be against the amendment as well.
Okay. Alderman Budmats.
Thank you. Um, I can't see a good reason why we would have a kid riding a bike on a public thoroughfare um at a high rate of speed without a helmet. If it's out within our can, within our capacity, control and provide for their safety, I would think people in the medical profession would be the first people wanting this for the safety so that they don't have more patients than they need.
Thank you Alderman Budmats. Other, Alderman McHale?
Uh, I'm curious how we would be regulating that. Can I ask staff to maybe um give us a little bit of a, I know you guys are busy over there. Apologize.
Yes, the honest answer to your questions, that would be difficult.
Very difficult.
Yeah.
Yes. Um, I think that families should be able to talk to their children about being safe and wearing helmets and do that for them, and it should be up to the individual families to take care of that. Thank you.
Did you have any additional questions for staff or for the council?
No, not this time.
All right. Uh, yes, Alderman Beniziano.
Thank you. Being a medical professional, I, I one hundred percent think kids should be wearing their helmets. My stepson has a helmet. Um, but that doesn't mean that I want my legislative telling me that as a parent, he should be wearing a helmet. So I'm putting two different hats on. Um, so uh as older woman, I, I don't think that's reasonable to include in our ordinance. As a mom, one hundred percent, he needs to wear a helmet.
Anything else?
Nope, that's it.
Okay. Any other comments from the council? All right, so hearing none, um, the motion on the table is to strike the requirement um for a helmet from the ordinance that's present, presented here. Uh, and it was a first from Alderman O'Brien and then the second was from.
Myself.
Alderman Beniziano, thank you for the reminder.
Yeah.
Um, will the clerk please call the roll?
Reyes.
Yes.
Kohler.
No.
McHale.
Yes.
Budmats.
No.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Beniziano.
Yes.
Boucher.
No.
We have four in favor uh and three against, so the strike does pass and the ordinance no longer contains the helmet requirement. So this now brings us back to item K, ordinance number twenty-five dash fifty-one amended. Um, looking, and we have a motion, we had already had a motion and a second to be able to consider that. Is there any discussion regarding this now amended uh ordinance before us? Yes, Alderman Beniziano.
Thank you. Um, uh, from either chief or deputy chief, what is our plan for education um to get, if this passes tonight, um, out particularly into our schools? Um, to, I, I think, I anticipate a bunch of uh, you know, kids coming up and saying, I can't ride my e-bike, so how are we gonna educate our students?
Yes, we can, we can work with our school resource officers and that would be the fastest route to get the information to our students. Uh, we would have an active social media campaign as well. That'd be the most effective way to get the word out quickly.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments from the council before we move to a vote? Okay. Then the question is, shall the amended ordinance be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Kohler.
Yes.
McHale.
Yes.
Budmats.
No.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Beniziano.
Yes.
Boucher.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
With six in favor and one opposed, this ordinance is adopted. This brings us to item L, ordinance number twenty-five dash zero-zero, which is to amend chapter thirty-four and appendix B of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Rolling Meadows regarding alarm systems and associated fees and fines. This is in for first reading, it was postponed at the August twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-five City Council meeting. Is there a motion to consider this ordinance for first reading? So moved. Thank you Alderman Boucher for the first and Alderman O'Brien for the second. Is there any discussion regarding uh moving this forward for second reading? Hearing none, the question is, shall the ordinance be moved forward to second reading? Will the clerk please call the roll?
McHale.
Yes.
Budmats.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Beniziano.
Yes.
Boucher.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
Kohler.
Yes.
With seven in favor and unopposed, this ordinance will be moved forward for second reading. For item M, this item uh is in for second reading, it was postponed at our March twenty-fifth meeting, um, ordinance number twenty-five dash twenty-three, which is to amend the comprehensive plan to adopt the Kirchhoff Road corridor study, looking for a motion to adopt this ordinance. So moved. Thank you Alderman Reyes for the first.
Second.
And thank you Alderman McHale for the second. Um, prior to opening up this item for discussion, staff has prepared a brief report for council since this item was postponed at the March twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-five City Council meeting and reappeared before the Planning and Zoning uh Commission last Tuesday for a recommendation. Um, we also, I think from public comment, have heard that there's an interest in providing additional information outside of the materials that were available through the agenda. Um, so we will then provide uh that additional information here before we open this up to discussion. So um staff, whenever you are ready.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Take one moment to go over to the presentation here.
Certainly.
Perhaps? I don't know if pushing the button will help or. Didn't help. Give just one moment. Uh, very good. So thank you again, Madam Mayor. Again, to briefly um summarize the process that got us here, um, throughout twenty-twenty-four, the city um embarked on the Kirchhoff Road corridor study. Um, the city had long envisioned Kirchhoff as a vibrant town center, who wanted to look at strategies to make that possible. Um, we also knew that with the new Bears Stadium, with social changes after COVID-nineteen, that um these changes to just the, the context of the corridor presented a lot, many opportunities as well as many challenges. Um, our goal with this study was to design a fresh approach and formed by new perspectives drawn by uh from, I should say, a wide range of community stakeholders, which we engaged through open houses and direct mail and going door-to-door and big signs and surveys and and everything else throughout twenty-twenty-four. Um, the result of that was the study considered by the city co, by the Planning and Zoning Commission, the City Council in March. Um, it had recommendations in four areas, including place-making and open space, economic development, zoning and transportation. Uh, the key recommendation in the transportation section is illustrated there below, which was the reconfiguration of Kirchhoff Road from five lanes uh to three lanes in order to create on-street parking, bicycle lanes and so on. Um, I'll just mention briefly here that this is meant to be interconnected. Each of these parts supports another. Um, it, it is hard, as we've talked about in previous meetings, to, to pull this apart and to still have a, a policy or a plan that um is functional in some cases, or at least is as functional as it could be. Um, based on some of the uncertainties, some of the concerns raised around this reconfiguration, the City Council directed um staff to, to retain engineering firm to conduct a traffic study that would really just evaluate, collect new data, review data up to that point and see if this policy um direction made sense, see if um this road could function uh efficiently as a freeland road. Um, the results from Civil Tech showed that it could. It showed that a reconfigured road can accommodate uh all the different types of future growth we've talked about, um, with minimal or really in some cases, no extra delay to drivers. Um, through that study, we found more evidence of safety concerns in addition to what we had already saw through the corridor study, and we also had um good evidence that the safety benefits um could come if the road was reconfigured, especially for bicyclists and pedestrians. Um, I know there's a lot of just different information out there and we've, we've tried to answer a lot of questions, um, but I, I mean, I will say that, you know, since um, you know, this study was completed, we've received letters of support from both of our school districts, from the police department, from the fire department, um, from the park district, um, all indicating that, you know, at least for their operations and what they're seeing in our community, that this makes um sense, that, you know, about the road reconfiguration part. That's not to say it's, it's the best option um for Rolling Meadows. Um, we are here to implement the options in the direction of the City Council, um, but I wanted to be clear that, you know, there has been at times um statements that these folks weren't consulted, um, and, and they have been as part of this very inclusive process. Um, as another part of that process, um, and as required by law, um, after your discussion at the Committee of the Whole meeting two weeks ago, this matter was referred to the Planning and Zoning Commission um for a public hearing, um, which took place in this room last Tuesday. Um, after a pretty extensive discussion over a few hours, um, they came up with the recommendation you see there on the screen, um, to try and give you a report of, of the committee and a, a sense of where the members were. Um, when they originally straw-pold, that, you know, three supported it as was presented, two supported it but hesitated um about specifically the on-street parking component. So yes, you, you changed the road from five lanes to three lanes, but do you have to have on-street parking there if you do something else? Um, do you have to do it now? And then two did not support this transportation section at all. Uh, the motion you see up there, which is recommending approval, including the transportation recommendations with quote the caveat or with the consideration to delay parking and consider other options, um, is what the PZC ultimately decided on. That was the three and the two members shown there. Um, we understand that to mean that the, the planning commission was recommending to you that if, if you proceed with the design of this project, that the city does, um, you know, that there's a desire just to add only on-street parking where it's needed to not create the disruption of, of having that on the street in places where it's, there's not a clear need yet to, but to potentially to preserve the need to have that in the future. Um, we understand that that is an ask for us essentially to the city to not permanently fill this parking lane we're about to create, not move the curb, but to put in some type of temporary or long-term temporary treatment, um, that can be reconfigured over time. Um, there's a few examples of that shown there on the right, and one is to fill it with planters, movable curbs and things. You can also just use paint and, and posts. Um, there are a lot of implementation questions to work through here, and we, we think we recommend that the right time to work through those is engineering, if, if the City Council chooses to move forward with, um, you know, adopting this part of the recommendations of the plan, uh, and directing that, uh, you know, engineering again to design where the road goes. Um, I, I will emphasize here too, as in hearing a few public comments, that, you know, this is a planning document, right? It does not itself do anything. There's still a public process to start engineering, throughout engineering, to actually move forward with the project. There's a lot of steps along the way where things like driveway clearances and where exactly the parking spot goes get, gets answered, but um this is about as far as staff, um, as we know how to, to bring you without some contention, consensus or some decision on if we should continue moving towards this, this policy goal. With that said, the decision point presents the Plan Commission, which is now um the one before the City Council. There's essentially at, at least three clear roads to go down. One is to adopt the plan as presented, including the transportation section, and that's just, again, setting that policy statement. Um, the second is an alternate included in the agenda packet, which is to adopt the plan um without this transportation section. Other parts of the plan change to recognize that this isn't there anymore. Um, the third, of course, always there is, is to not adopt this uh amendment, to move on without it. Um, I'll say here too, of course, i- i- if there's a desire to pursue something other than these three routes up, uh, up on the screen or that have been prepared, we're happy to support that, to facilitate that. Um, this is a complicated document, right? At this point, there's about three, four hundred different pages of things that need to work with each other. Um, if there's a desire to do something other than one of these three paths, we would appreciate the uh, the chance to, to defer that to the next meeting, to prepare something based on your direction, to make sure that that accurately um reflects your intent, reflects um the outcomes the city wants, and is something that will um be functional and effective um when it is adopted. Uh, with that, Madam Mayor, that would conclude the presentation.
Thank you. And so I wanna clarify with the options that are presented here, um, in the agenda packet, you'll note that there are two subsections for the different ordinances. The first is listed as M-one, so the motion for reviewing um M right now is referring to M-one specifically uh first, and this is the first option that says that we would adopt as presented, which is the Staff and Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation. Um, if that motion does not pass for that M-one ordinance, um, then we would proceed with adopting without the transportation section, which is located in your packet um as M-two, which is located in your packet as M2, which is that modified ordinance. And if that doesn't pass, then we'd be looking for discussion and either if there's a different direction to provide to staff to then postpone, we could pursue moving forward. And if there is no additional discussion or amendments or other direction that's presented, then we'll have that third option, which would be to deny the adoption of the plan in its entirety. I'm going to look to my parliamentarian to see if there's anything that we might have missed from that procedure.
No, only that if there's some amendment that the council would like to make to either options one or two. The recommendation from staff is that the council discuss that and give direction and then postpone the entire matter for consideration to the September twenty-third meeting.
Thank you. At this time, are there any council members who are, have questions about the procedure before us before we begin?
For clarification, September thirtieth meeting.
Thank you.
September thirtieth, thank you. Okay, so with that, before us is M1, which is the plan in its entirety. Are there any, is there any discussion regarding adopting the plan in its entirety noted as M1 in your packet? Aldrin Boucher, go ahead.
So I kind of made some notes and I'll be as quick and concise as possible. I want to first thank my residents for reaching out. This is probably the most I've talked to people in Ward Five over anything I've done in the last two years and it's been great to hear from everybody. I'd also like to thank my fellow Alder people. This is not an easy job. It's not a job that we take lightly. So I know everyone has put a lot of effort and a lot of time into being here and to doing this work. So it was said at the last meeting that Alderman who said that they were listening to their constituents did not read the road study and did not take the data seriously. And I wanted to address that situation because I took it personally. Since we received the road study, I have read the road study. I have spoken to my wonderful statistician Alderman Kohler, who helps me to understand data that just, when you look at it, it's just so much and he makes it so much easier to understand. So I've spent a lot of time talking to Alderman Kohler. I spent time working or speaking with a urban designer and civil engineer who was completely outside of this process. We sat down and he answered all of my questions and spent two hours reviewing the road study. I provided it without telling them where I stood on the situation. So we would go into the conversation completely neutral. He brought up some great points to me and talked through the entire situation. He also felt that there were some great data points, but also some data points that might have just missed what we were trying to do as a whole. I then spent time reviewing the information available to everybody on the Chicago forty-fourth Ward website about what happens in and around Wrigley Field when there is a Cubs game. And while I understand a baseball stadium that's only used from May till September is not the same as a football stadium that has a higher capacity, it's an example right here in our community of what happens when a stadium is in a neighborhood. And there are great maps and information on the forty-fourth Ward of Chicago's website. If you would like to know how traffic slows, how they have to prevent trucks and prevent this and have stoppage during and on game days. So I spent time really learning and seeing what happens there. I also went on to the websites of SoFi Stadium in LA, AT&T Stadium in Dallas and the Cardinal Stadium in Arizona and looked at how many days a year those stadiums were used outside of their football lives. So it was said that football is ten days a year. These stadiums are used twenty percent of the year for events like sports, concerts, live events, soccer. Everything you could think of comes into these stadiums because you don't just build a stadium to host ten Bears games. You build a stadium to host everything else that's going to make you money. So twenty percent of the total year, those stadiums are being used, which means twenty percent of the year. I don't really appreciate being laughed at. I lastly spoke to residents not just in my ward, but at events at the library and even at a charity golf outing outside of the city. I was approached by a resident who wanted to talk to me at seven-thirty in the morning about Kirchhoff Road. Last place I expected somebody to want to talk, but I really listened and felt like I got an idea and understanding of where people came from on both sides of the situation. So I also just feel like we are missing a huge piece of this puzzle. What is the price tag? What is the price tag on waiting on parking? What is the price tag on doing this work? I feel like I've heard a couple of different situations, but I feel like at the Planning and Zoning Committee, that question was not asked and that question is very important. If we delay parking, are we increasing the cost to the residents? Because this already had a high price tag and now we're going to go backwards and do double work or triple work, which means we're increasing our price tag on this situation. So is there a price that we would say is what the price is if we say no, if we say we're going to do this and put parking in right away? And what is the price if we say we're going to do this and wait six months, a year to do parking?
So if we understand your question for staff, you're asking if there is, if there's a price impact by not using parking and using an alternative method that was mentioned?
Because yeah, we're going to, if we're going to look into parking, let's say it takes us a year. So for a year, we've done something that's going to cost us money. Then we have to get rid of that something, which is going to cost us money. Then we're going to spend money to do the thing we've decided to do. What is that, I know it's estimates, but what are we, how much are we increasing the cost of the project by delaying parking?
So for city staff, I'm looking to Assistant City Manager Glenn Cole to be able to either provide some follow-up questions for Aldrin Boucher's question, or if we have a recommendation or estimate that can be provided. I think that's what she's requesting.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, you know, high level, right? If there was a desire to move forward with designing the reconfiguration of the road, you would have that option and you would have firm, you know, much more firm price estimates to consider at that time before you directed that project out to bid. At least in our initial look, you know, the cheapest thing to do is just to paint the parking and be done, right? Anything else in there, we're putting more things in that cost more money. Anywhere from, you know, so our original estimate on this project is pretty affordable for the length of the road. It's about six hundred thousand dollars plus or minus a hundred. You know, the back of the envelope we have here is an extra a hundred fifty thousand to five hundred thousand dollars.
Okay, so in theory, we could be doubling the cost of the project by delaying the parking.
Yes, to elaborate a bit on some of your assumptions, I did not understand the Planning Commission's recommendations being, you know, just a year. I mean, it sounds like they were envisioning a longer-term picture. I would also say, you know, based on the grant we received from Cook County for engineering, I would expect that we would receive a grant for construction that's probably fifty-fifty. But yes, it's still a significant added expense. That's something that you could consider at this point. You can consider if you chose to design it. It's, it is a, it is an unusual approach and it does add expense.
So I think Aldrin Boucher, you bring up a good point about weighing that recommendation with the Planning and Zoning Commission. And so can you help the council understand that if we were to, so you mentioned if we go out to bid, that there would be certain assumptions that would need to be required for that request for proposal, right? Is that, is that why you're saying we would have more information if we had a firmer bid to be able to capture those costs?
Sure. So the checkpoints here, you know, the next step would be, and I think easiest to answer your question, Mayor, by explaining that process.
Thank you.
The next step would be to select an engineering firm to design this work. Typically, that's called phase one, where you look at a few different alternatives and then phase two, which is really getting it all the way to construction-ready. On a project, again, that's pretty small like this, we, I think we're looking towards doing those together in one contract. So you'd still have, you know, some public process, just without the city council involved, just, you know, consultants and public houses and things where you look at different options, you know, you look at different arrangements, different cross-sections. You start to really get into the nitty-gritty of exactly how many spaces and where and the spacing and so on. At the end of that, you have some alternatives. The city council would pick one and there'd be pretty good price estimates around that. They would take that all the way through, you know, construction engineering to being ready to bid. And then you'd have a very good estimate of what to expect when that is let through, you know, that competitive process.
Aldrin Boucher, does that provide the answer that you're looking for or are there still some questions?
Oh, no, I'm good. Thank you.
Yeah, okay. Aldrin Kohler, you were, you had your hand up?
Yes, I did.
And then Aldrin Aniziano.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have more comments and then some questions that we can direct to our city staff. If I believe I just heard you state here, the plan doesn't work unless it's everything. That if we take out the transportation part, the plan doesn't really work. Is that, is that your stand?
I wouldn't say that. It's a harder plan.
But you did say that.
Well, I said that they're meant to be interconnected and that it's hard to just take one part out without it affecting other parts. The second alternative you have, sorry, the first alternative, the second option you have in your packet, shows how taking that out goes on to affect other things just in the planning document. But also when, for example, in zoning, we talk about trying to have buildings closer to the street and interacting with the street. That just looks a lot different when that's, you know, a shared-use path with bicyclists going by and five lanes of traffic before someone on the other side of the street can cross over to a storefront on one side of the street. Again, it's, it's not unworkable, but it is a, it is a harder proposition.
So not unworkable, meaning it is, it is workable. Part Plan B, which is the second one, is workable and we could make some progress if I took the transportation component out. And, you know, I know that intermingling, we've talked about that. It could be, we can make some progress, which is kind of what the Planning and Zoning Board said too. If you take out the parking component, could you make it work? And I think you told them the answer, yes, you could make it work without the parking component. Is that accurate representation of what was said at the Planning and Zoning?
It is a lot easier, you know, in my professional experience, to see how this works with the, you know, without on-street parking than it is to see how this works on a five-lane road.
My apologies, Aldrin Kohler. It's really important for us to be able to hear city staff and I think it's really important since this is, this is why, I mean, pretty much our, one hundred percent of our public comment was here, was for this particular item. So if we could please either subdue our voices or if you need to have a conversation, just step out into the hall and that way we can actually hear what staff are presenting to us. My apologies, Aldrin Kohler. Please continue.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, I also listened to what you said here today and what you said at the Planning and Zoning meeting when you presented this information. And you know from the committee, the whole meeting on this topic, when we discussed this, I questioned, not the data. I will get, I will give Civil Tech credit for giving us, doing and getting the data for us. But my question there was, of course, the interpretation of the data and going through the statistics and that. And Steve and you and I had kind of a back and forth on that. But I think the conclusion I reached from that is I don't really see how the speed issue would solve, you know, by reducing the lanes and getting a speed, actually addresses the accidents that were occurring because most of them are occurring at zero speed, rear-end collisions, something like that. So we had that conversation. You recall that conversation?
I did.
Okay. And I think my conclusion from that, maybe it wasn't your conclusion, was the actual safety aspect might not be able to be achieved by a road reducing the speed on Kirchhoff Road. Is, that was, that was my conclusion. Is that, did you reach a different conclusion?
I did.
So you believe that if most of the accidents are not caused by speed, that reducing the speed would solve the problem?
So I think for staff, did you?
I just want clarification as to whether we're.
Did you want to provide, do you have a follow-up question to that?
I can reply to the question.
Go ahead.
And certainly, again, we have our expert from Civil Tech here. He's a traffic engineer. I'm not. In my planning expertise, you know, I look to a few things. One, even if speed isn't a cause, speed is a contributor to, well, first, in some of those cases, we just don't know how much speed contributed. Second, in those cases where accidents happen, speed's a contributor to the severity of the accident, especially for bicyclists, pedestrians, more vulnerable road users. And third, just at a high level, you know, again, this toolbox, this set of techniques has been used very many times throughout the country. It is very often when it's studied, reduces accidents on the road to which it's applied. I'm not familiar with one case where accidents increased as a result of implementing these tools. Aldrin, I think your viewpoint is that, you know, if it doesn't, if the intervention doesn't direct or affects the root cause, then why should we expect anything to change? I think that's a scientific view. That's a valid view. I, you know, in my planning training, I just look at the outcomes. I mean, the causes can be what they are. We have a road where compared to its peers, it is, you know, it's less safe when benchmarked and we have a set of tools that when they're applied to roads like this repeatedly, make it more safe.
Thank you. Can you continue?
Please.
Another concern that came up in many of the discussions and meetings I've had over the past week with our residents and phone calls and all that was that the traffic, the increase in traffic expected over the next several years that we obtained, was the data obtained from, to do that, was that from CMAP that we got that data?
There's really, you know, the difference between the traffic on the road from the last published IDOT count and the traffic forecast for year 2050 comes from three things. The first is that little bit of ambient growth that's happened since the last IDOT count. I believe without in front of me, that's somewhere in the neighborhood of nine hundred cars. Many of those, it wasn't studied specifically, but many of those could come from the townhouse development to form a Dominique site. On top of that, we weigh her on, I believe in the neighborhood of three thousand or so trips, a little less, assuming that all three opportunity sites in the plan are successfully redeveloped. So that's new developments over here across from City Hall. That's new use of the fire station and that is new use of the two vacant lots in front of the Dominique's development.
Correct.
Then the rest of that is regional growth forecasted from CMAP. That's, I believe, around twenty-seven hundred, twenty-eight hundred trips. That's all growth expected in the region, you know, or from regional causes through 2050. We think most of that is from the introduction of the retail, restaurant, hotel, mixed-use development components on Arlington Park, which is reflected in the CMAP model. We don't know exactly how much. It's hard to take that out and rerun the model and put it in. That's not something they normally do. But based on the state of the model today, that's, that is that last chunk of growth and we think most of that owes to Arlington Park.
The reason I question that is because the person who brought that to my attention said that the CMAP data does not include much consideration for the Arlington Park development, but you're saying that's incorrect.
It depends how you think about it. So there's all these uses that are there throughout the year, right? There's always a hotel there. There's always restaurants there. That's true. Whether or not there's a game day or, again, I don't know Aldrin Boucher's research. I assume it's valid of twenty percent of the time being used. That's always there and that's always generating traffic. That is not special event traffic. Those typically have their own entirely separate traffic management plans prepared for them. We expect the Bears will prepare one. We have our own folks that we retained earlier this summer, actually with experience at SoFi Stadium, to make sure that we're reviewing those and working with the Village Arlington Heights to make those successful. Those unfortunately don't exist at this time when we're working through this particular planning process.
Okay. My next question is maybe for the staff, maybe for city attorney on this. But one of the things that keeps coming up, and by the way, is because of a comment that we made here, was that even though the plan as it's written has not been adopted, we've still moved ahead on most of the plan. And the question they give me is, well, then why do you even bother looking at this plan approval if you're going to do these pieces independent of that? Can we, if we, if we reject the plan in its entirety, I'm talking option C, can you still go in and adopt each individual item that's in the plan as piecemeal?
The answer to that question is yes. And you can adopt that without amending the plan, but the city council can take action and make any appropriate zoning amendment that they would want or any other approval that would be required to implement any portion of the plan that you see.
Okay, thank you. The reason I ask that question is because there's so much excitement in this room, both for and against, whatever your excitement is. After, regardless of where this vote comes out, whether it's choice one, two or three up here, we can still keep this community engaged and get input on what they really want to do in an exciting way, rather than saying we're mad at each other and all that. So we can continue to dialogue with everybody here on what they, the pieces they like and approve those as we move forward. Correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
So just as a, so as a clarification, if we aren't going to pursue either of these three options, the discussion that needs to take place is going to require a postponement?
I don't, I'm not sure I understand that.
So if you're, so if you're saying that you want to just adopt specific, so for example, we have a visual here, right? That shows of the four items, you have two options. One is adopting it as presented and then the second one is to adopt it without the transportation section. So is what you're referring to by adopting this piecemeal referring to the second option or are you referring to something else?
No, what I'm referring to is that in much of the discussions that we've had, that has been said in some of the slides we presented, that some of the stuff that's in this plan, we've already done, such as zoning. Let's just, it doesn't seem to be controversial. We brought it forward to the council. We said some of these zoning changes, we can go ahead with. So we did it anyway and I think that's been approved. Is that correct?
So I, yes, however, the difference between what the council is approving in the ordinances and the zoning changes, that's a policy decision and it's separate from, so actually changing the city code is different than amending the comprehensive plan because that's the tool for developers. So yeah, that's true. We can do, the council has the power to be able to make all sorts of different amendments. But if it's not reflected in the updates to our comprehensive plan, we're losing out on that opportunity to be able to communicate those changes and the direction of those changes, the why behind it. And so if there's anything that I've missed from that, Assistant City Manager Cole, you know, feel free to add to that. But from, from, the whole purpose of incorporating the comprehensive plan updates is to be able to communicate that.
Yes, Madam Mayor. So usually, if I could, Aldrin, usually we adopt these plans and then probably the over-under is two years later, you do the zoning work. It's become contemporary now to do these more or less in lockstep with each other. You adopt the plan and very quickly you move on the zoning because things tend to, you can't get a whole lot done without the legislative part. This, this is the first plan I know of to do it in the reverse order. That's not a bad thing. In many states, you couldn't necessarily do that or it would be less advisable. I mean, in Illinois, we have a lot of ability to do that if we want. But usually the comprehensive plan sets the policy and the code implements it and it is less typical to do that out of order. I'm not sure if I'm answering your question, but I still think it makes sense to adopt those parts, even if what they're recommending you do has already been done. I don't think there's any harm.
And before Aldrin Kohler, you responded to that, City Manager Rob Savo, if you had additional comment?
Yep. Thank you, Mayor. To add a little bit to this, I think one of the things that's important is to go back to the why did we undertake this entire endeavor to begin with? We, when we commenced this entire project, we're working towards the idea of evaluating and setting a vision for Kirchhoff Road. A comprehensive plan provides that tool. It is not binding by any means. So you adopt the comprehensive plan and it provides a vision under which a city can operate. And more importantly, a vision under which individuals who choose to invest in your town in the future can understand what the elected body sees as the intended future and development in a community. The benefit of adopting, even if without the transportation component, goes back to answering the why in the first place did we go down this path? A significant amount of work went into it, both amongst, I shouldn't say both, among city staff, the city council, the Planning and Zoning Commission, our consultants who we brought in and the community. And I think that when you take in totality all of the information that's included with or without the transportation component, it still is important to have a vision for Kirchhoff Road because we are at a point in time where there is anticipated to be dynamic change in our area. And so absent the adoption, if we were to just do piecemeal components and say we have this plan, it was never adopted, but we have it sitting on a shelf somewhere, the one risk that exists is now you don't have a cohesiveness to what it is that you're trying to accomplish within this area. within this area. And so irrespective of with or without the transportation, given the exercise that we've gone through, I believe that there still is value in order to portray to those people who are going to be focusing on Rolling Meadows, because there will be people focusing. That, that is setting the vision for what people will see our community to be and be part of their decision on whether or not to make investments into development or to move here, what have you. So I wanted to add a little bit of that context as well.
Understood. Thank you, Madam Mayor. No further questions.
Okay. Any other comment? Yes, Alderman DeZiano.
Thank you. So I want to apologize, start by apologizing to, to the taxpayers for, for spending some of our tax money on this road study. It did not give me anything that I needed or expected. I was hoping to get information on how the Arlington development would impact our community and with the traffic, and we have now since learned that, that data doesn't exist. Had we known that upfront, then I would never have voted in favor of doing the, the road study. That was truly my point of asking for the road study and why I had voted, asked for the postponement and voted in favor of the postponement to get that traffic study. Because we know right now what our community looks for, looks like. We know what our traffic looks like. I didn't need a road study to tell me that. We live here. What I need and what I think, what most of us council members need to know to make good decisions is what does that look like with the Arlington development? That's the big question in the sky. So, so for that, I am truly sorry. Had I known upfront that the data just didn't exist, I would never have voted in favor of that. What I'm not apologetic for is how engaged our community has become. I wish that we heard from as many residents on all our topics. It would make our job a lot easier. So continue, please, reaching out to us in, in all of this. We know the Bears are coming. It's, it's confirmed now. So please, keep reaching out to us on, on all the topics within our community. I will continue to dispute that the traffic study and the engineers on all of this, that the Arlington development will heavily impact our traffic needs on Kirchhoff Road. I do agree that restriping Kirchhoff Road is easy, but it is a waste of taxpayer money. I am not willing to waste any more of our taxpayer money or my own. What I would like to do is spend our TIF money elsewhere on Kirchhoff Road. We really haven't even talked much about money at all through these many cows and meetings. We know that we have that TIF money to spend on Kirchhoff Road. I, being on economic development, myself and Alderman O'Brien, we can come up with a list very quickly of how to spend that on Kirchhoff Road. Ask Economic Development, we could tell you. I, I, I've been against this plan since its conception. I speak for my residents. I'll continue to speak for my residents. I am completely against whatever M1, and tonight I'll be voting in favor of M2 without the transportation. Thank you.
Okay. Did we, did you have any questions regarding?
Nope.
Okay. No clarification there?
No.
Alderman O'Brien?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. No questions, really just comments. I also do want to, obviously being the third ward, it is the front door of the third ward there, so I do want to thank all residents. It's been great. I think just direct outreach, phone calls, texts, emails, stops in the jewel, coffee chats, it's been great. I think I'm getting close to about 125 to 150, and close to 200 overall, when you involve the business owners that have come out and just stakeholders in general. So it's been outstanding from that. That's been the best part of this is because obviously there's different opinions. It's an emotional topic, understanding opportunities and challenges of talking to all the residents and the stakeholders involved and respecting those diverse opinions for those in favor and as those opposed to the configuration, is that residents help shape the policies of Rolling Meadows. And that's the way that I, that was a very common question and a very valid question during the last six months as this topic was picked up as well, is that, is it helps shapes the policies. A lot of folks asked me what my perspective was as being an elected official, is that yes, absolutely, I know we joked last time, but it's not really a joke. I've read all 489 pages that we have in front of us tonight, and the 400 in the past, the committee, the whole, going back to March, is that that is, as Alderman Budmats, a kudos to him for his update at the beginning of the meeting, we all do take this seriously. Yes, it is a part-time job for all of us. We all do go to work nine to five during the day. So it is a lot of additional hours, but we do put our heart and soul into Rolling Meadows. But that is one portion of how I make decisions to represent the third ward. Absolutely. As we discussed now and at past meetings, there's been questions on the traffic side. There's been question, things on going back to March, the studies that were done. But the review and the analysis is one portion. What I always come back to of when I ran for being an Alderman is resident-led decisions. And in this case, it's been very clear to me, full support for items one, two, and three. I just can't get behind the road reconfiguration portion of the agenda tonight. There's even two agenda items we just approved. I'm not going to say it's apples to apples, but it's kind of like Fuji apples to Granny Smith apples. We just voted tonight to reduce and limit parking requirements on items D and F. One was around parking lot configuration, and then one was also changing our requirement for parking to make it a recommendation and a non-binding. So that was a big concern that I know Planning and Zoning spoke to as well. So no questions, all the questions I, I feel have been answered in the past. I will be in favor of adopting option two or B, the full, the traffic study, or the transportation one, not included, but portions one, two, and three on behalf of the third ward. And again, just the thanks for the commitment, look forward to continued transparency on any topic that comes to be for us. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Alderman Kohler, this is your second bite at the apple?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
My, my second bite is actually in response to Alderman DeZiano's comment, in, in not to counter her, because she, her opinions are, of course, extremely valid and I respect that. But I will say that I was one of them also who asked for the traffic study. It is not a waste of taxpayers' money to do studies to understand how we should be spending our money. So if you're talking X, I don't know what the cost is, 1 million, 2 million, whatever we're talking about, I'd rather spend 40,000 to understand whether we should spend that dollars, to understand that, whether it's worth spending it. But it's also not a waste of dollars to have CivilTech give us the data and collect the data and organize the data for us so we can, in the future, understand Oriole, the corner of Oriole and, and Kirchhoff. That is helpful information. The one thing that I, in, in, you know, I, I wanted the data, is what I said. I will do my own analysis of the data. I, you know, I, I always have in the back of my mind the famous quote by Mark Twain, who said, "There's three types of lies in this world. There's lies, there's damn lies, and there's statistics." And that's my concern, is that you can tell a story you want with statistics. And I'm not questioning, I, I actually appreciate CivilTech, by the way. So Steve, I don't want to make it sound like I don't think the plan has a lot of validity. And it does have a lot for what we're going to do going forward, and that's going to pave the way for, for a, a lot of things in my mind on, on understanding Oriole, understanding, by the way, even though I said, I mean, eliminating, as we should, because it's not part of the core corridor lane reduction, Wilkie and Frontage Road, that is where your accidents are occurring. We need to dig into that and understand that. So, and that, by the way, affects what's coming with the Bears stadium too. So there's a lot of stuff we got out of that that is going to be useful to us going forward. So I don't want the residents to think that we wasted their dollars, because I can use that data. I also just want to say that in the end of the day, I do not want this discussion to stop today. I've got the, we've got the community engaged. I've heard many people tell me their own visions for what they want to see, and I'm willing to spend as much time after what tonight to continue that discussion regardless of the way that this vote goes. I will listen to you and I would move the city forward with whatever they want it to be. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Alderman Reyes?
So I agree with Alderman Kohler. I don't want the discussion to stop today, but I am going to be voting for M1. I've heard from quite a few residents in my ward and other wards that want me to vote no. However, I cannot vote no based on the reasons I've been given, and I'm going to address each one of them. The current construction is already causing congestion. That construction and lane reduction is on Kirchhoff, but the road diet doesn't use invasive construction. It's paint and will not start on, by, by the on and off ramp of 53. It will be further east, closer to the center of town, and will not impact commuters as much as the current construction is doing at the moment. It will cause traffic jams and bottlenecks. No, the data shows that the road does not have enough traffic to support all lanes, so the road diet will slow traffic down but not cause jams. The businesses along Kirchhoff don't want it. This isn't true. Some business owners do want it, but felt pressured by other business owners to speak out against it. The emergency traffic will be slowed trying to get to the hospital. The expert emergency responders said that the emergency travel times will not be impacted. Our taxes are going to go up or use our tax money to put in traffic signals at Oriole. A road diet is minimally invasive to create with some paint. There will be no costly construction. A light signal would be $300,000 or more, and the traffic volume doesn't support IDOT's funding for it. We're not Arlington Heights' Strop trying to make us like them. I know that we're not like other towns, but our city needs more retail, more things to do, and more reasons to slow down and stop so we can get a bite at Fertillo's, Rep's, or Phoenix Flame. We want to create more reasons for people to gather and meet in our town center and not just drive quickly through it to get to Palatine or Arlington Heights. The road diet is just part of our comprehensive plan to attract developers and businesses into our town with the intention to create more value and wealth on Kirchhoff. I want to see bakeries, mixed-use entertainment like Bocce Ball, pet supply boutiques. We want to attract more cyclists, more pedestrian traffic. Lastly, the Bears are coming. This is exactly why we would do this. We don't want Bears traffic through traffic on Kirchhoff. Study shows that 40% of stadium attendees drink alcohol, and there is a 13% increase in DUI-related arrests on game day. I think this is the type of traffic we want to actively deter from traveling on Kirchhoff. We are going to create a plan for the corridor closer to the Arlington Park land that will allow us to take advantage of the opportunities that a Bears stadium will bring to our town. I'm going to vote yes, because this is just the first step towards progress. And respectfully to all residents that have spoken negatively about the road diet, give us more time to move this plan forward and let us show you the vision we have for the Kirchhoff corridor. I end with a quote from John F. Kennedy. "Change is the law of life, and those who only look to the past or present are certain to miss the future."
Are there any other comments? Alderman McHale and then Alderman Budmats?
Okay. Thank you. So first off, I just want to make it clear again to everybody's point that's made this already. We can, because Alderman Kohler had said he wants to continue this discussion, we can keep continuing discussing this by adopting the first, the first recommendation here, because if we take out that fourth one, then that stops the conversation. It's over. And I believe that we have an opportunity to keep the conversation going, get the engineering plans that we need to make informed decisions on what's coming next. I don't know why we are allowing the Bears to dictate what's going on in our downtown area for a stadium that's not even going to be built for another three years minimum. So I think that we need to get ahead of this right now and start planning for our future. That's in Arlington Heights. Yes, it's going to affect us. It's going to be a regional change for all of us. It really is. And that information is forthcoming, but we have an opportunity right now with what's sitting in front of our door to enhance our community. So our job is to keep options open and set Rolling Meadows up for the future. With the Chicago Bears slated to be our neighbors, regional visibility and traffic patterns will shift, and I want to encourage us to think about positioning ourselves to benefit rather than be bypassed. Tonight's decision is modest but meaningful. We're voting to incorporate the Kirchhoff Road corridor study into our comprehensive plan. This is not a construction vote. It's a planning step that allows us to use grant, grant dollars that we've already secured for engineering so that we can see real drawings, test assumptions, and make informed choices to benefit our community. The plan's four pieces are designed to work together, linking transportation, redevelopment, and community spaces into one coherent framework. Together, they create the conditions to spark investable projects, attract businesses and residents, and grow revenues beyond property taxes that will strengthen our long-term fiscal health. Our community has been clear, people want a true sense of the place. It's been out there. We've, we've asked, we've, we've gotten information back about that, and right now, we don't have that. Kirchhoff Road has a potential, but today it functions as an oversized corridor that divides more than connects us together. Meanwhile, neighboring communities are investing in walkable and vibrant centers and reaping the benefits while we stay still and fall behind. These are not guesses here. We have traffic studies, CMAP predictive modeling, and guidance from professional planners and subject matter experts looking at what's possible for tomorrow, not just what exists today. So rightsizing the corridor can calm speeds, improve safety, unlock development, and finally bring life to the downtown our residents have been asking for. It's hard to visualize what we can't see yet, and that's exactly why we need to pursue the engineering and include this in study, this study in the comprehensive plan, because waiting to see what happens next is not a strategy. We've already invested time and resources. Costs will not be lower later, and opportunities like this are rare, if, will probably never cross our front door again. We can either settle for what we've inherited, or we can be intentional about shaping the kind of city center our community has long asked for and really deserves. Including the Kirchhoff Road corridor study in our comprehensive plan does not commit us to the construction. It simply ensures that this vision remains a real viable option for the future of Rolling Meadows, and I will be voting in favor for the first recommendation here, because I believe we owe it to our residents and to future generations to keep that door open. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Budmats?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I've heard a lot of testimony. I've heard testimony from professional people who are stating opinions derived from analyzing facts. And I've heard testimony from residents who are stating opinions derived from their life experiences here in Rolling Meadows. Some of it derived from their fear of the unknown or their fear of change. Just because we're afraid of change doesn't mean that we can't consider all the options that are before us. I've been called arrogant, but I'm not arrogant enough to think that in two weeks I can learn as much about traffic studies as that gentleman learned in 20 years of doing the job. I'm just not that smart, and I don't think anybody else in this room is either. He's a professional engineer. He's required to have a higher level of care and a standard that we need to respect. I, I am not going to discount his data or his analysis thereof for my convenience if I were opposed to this. I, I want to talk about the majority, and I've heard about how the majority of my residents want this, the majority of my residents want that. There's not a clear majority in my ward. And the truth of the matter is that I'm, I'm really tired of hearing about the vocal majority. There's a silent majority that says, "Thank you for bringing this out. Thank you for talking about this. Thank you for having the conversation continue." The truth of the matter is, is that if you want to have a conversation where everybody is involved, then vote, then we should be voting for A. There's not a shovel hitting the ground. There's nothing that's going to change. All we're talking about is a comprehensive plan. I was on the council six years ago, seven, whatever, six, seven years ago when we passed this. Nothing has happened with it. Nothing. There is no teeth to it. Nothing happened with it. It's, it's a plan, and if we don't fund the plan, or we don't fund the changes that are associated with the plan, nothing will happen with this one either. And so if we want to move ahead and, and take all of the engineering into, and have Cook County pay for it rather than us pay for it, then why wouldn't we pass it, pay for the engineering, sorry, have Cook County pay for the engineering study and make a logical decision based upon a greater level of knowledge? I voted against the traffic study. I, I didn't think it was the greatest idea in the world. The truth of the matter is, is that it showed me that the problem of safety was even worse than we thought it was, that 80% of the people would, will, will speed going west on Kirchhoff is not acceptable. There's a reason why Superintendent of Schools from District 15 and the High School District sent us a letter saying, "Thank you for considering adopting this," because they don't want to see their kids hit on a bike, and whether it happens once every 20... And whether it happens once every 28.2 years or every 40.1 years is unacceptable, and speed kills. And the doc, the, the, the data that shows that the higher the speed, the more, the more dangerous the crash. So there is absolutely no reason not to pass A. We are not changing anything other than a piece of paper. That's it. We're changing a piece of paper. It will not change Kirchhoff Road until we all, as a group, vote on changing Kirchhoff Road. So Albert Einstein said, "To do what is right is not always popular, and to do what is popular is not always right." I'm willing to do something unpopular. I'm repeating it. I will do something unpopular if it means to the greater benefit of all. And if that means greater safety for my residents, I'm all for it. A vote of, vote yes changes nothing except for a corridor plan. Please, consider all of our options. Keep all the options open. If you shut them down, you've stopped the conversation. And I don't think you've served the real majority of Rolling Meadows residents who want something to change for the better on Kirchhoff.
So procedurally, we have the motion and the second to consider M1 first, which is the plan, as stated. So it was referred to, I think, as Option One or as Option A as we've been in discussion. So to clarify, if this passes, then we move forward to the rest of our agenda this evening. If it fails, then we will return with a motion and a second to consider M2. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you. So at this time, I'm going to be asking for whether this ordinance, ordinance number 25-23 should be approved as stated in version M1. Will the clerk please call the roll?
McHale?
Yes.
Budmats?
Yes.
O'Brien?
No.
Veneziano?
No.
Boucher?
No.
Reyes?
Yes.
Kohler?
No.
With four, with three in favor and four against, this motion does not carry. This now brings us to, I need a first and a second for considering M2, which is the second version of this.
Some of.
Thank you, Aldrin Veneziano for the first.
Second.
And thank you, Alderman O'Brien for the second. Is there any discussion regarding M2 before us? Aldrin McHale?
I really don't see any point in moving forward if we're going to not address the road and continue that conversation, so I will be voting against that. Thank you.
Aldrin Budmats?
I agree. There's, there's really no sense in moving forward if the, if the plan, if the staff has told us the plan doesn't work well together without Option Four, I think they need to come back to us with a cohesive plan of where this would really be without the transportation section. Otherwise, we're just, we're just wasting more time and dollars, honestly.
Okay. Aldrin Boucher?
I would think the library would disagree. I hear quite a bit from resident, or from the other board members on the library board and from people who use the library that Wayfair signs directing people to the library, to Kimball Hill Park are important and, and missing. The library was excited to hear that there could be some more wayfinding. We have a gem of a library hidden away kind of off the main drag. So I think closing this whole plan would be a discouragement to make it easier to find things, especially with signage that we are struggling to show right now.
Anything else, Aldrin Boucher?
No.
Okay. Aldrin Veneziano?
Thank you. So this plan originally started on economic development. It came to us to, how can we better Kirchhoff Road Corridor? And I believe that was on topic for years. And we went through several member committee, several members and throwing around ideas. And we tried incentives. And I think through Alderman O'Brien and myself, like, trying to retain some of those members of what, what were the things that kept sticking? And, and I'll be honest, most of the members didn't know much about zoning, but it, it always came back to wayfinding and, and then the economic development. How can we better those economic development? And, and so it was, how can we make this a whole plan? And that's what started this entire thing. Never, ever was there anything in there about a road diet, ever. I'll be honest, myself and Alderman O'Brien have talked extensively. We don't know where that came from. And so to throw this entire thing would be years of economic development, just talk, you know, planning and what their initiatives have been would be to the wayside with no intention of ever having this road diet. So to say, to say to throw it away because we don't want to condense Kirchhoff Road is, is just a waste of, of many years of time because it was never intended to have this road diet. That's not the purpose of where this started from. So I would say shame on us as a council to even consider that. The purpose was to revive Kirchhoff Road Corridor. And if that means that we don't condense the roads, then we need to figure out as a council, as a community, and as staff, how do we revive Kirchhoff Road Corridor?
Anything else?
I understand that sentiment. However, the, the plan that came to, or that you guys must have been talking about it, economic development, led us to get this plan that was presented to us from a, from Lakota Group who had said this is the way forward for this plan. Part of this, this specific plan that we're going to put into our comprehensive plan includes the, the road reconfiguration. So I don't know how we're going to adopt a plan that takes that out when it wasn't the intent as the planners that we have asked to put this study together. I, I'm, I'm just confused. So I, I am okay with trying to make a better sign for, for the, for the library and for Kimball Hill Park. But I'm curious as to, now that we've put the zoning in place where we're trying to get businesses to move closer to, what does that even look like? I, I, I just can't see it, so I don't really have a question. I'm just kind of tossing it out there.
Yeah. For your second bite, then you're, you can make comments, so. Anything else?
No, not this time.
Okay, thanks. Aldrin O'Brien and then Aldrin Budmats?
No, I would just add to Alderman Veneziano from the EDC perspective. It is what we like. The incentives are in place. It's been successful. I think we've had three or four before us recently in the last six months. Another thing from EDC that one of my peers made reference earlier is TIF money. There's TIF money now available from the TIF district across the street. So from the EDC perspective, that's where we felt over the last several years of doing this, there would be opportunity. And since we did put some of these items into place already, that somebody, if they are interested in the two-acre lot in front of the, the new townhomes, they could go in with the zoning closer to the street. So from that perspective, and I, I don't want to go too back in history here, but I think one was presented to us in March, and now it's even become more clear to me with all the resident engagement over the last several months. It could look good on paper. It could be a plan. We've all sliced and diced every report and every presentation we've had. But what I said six months ago, I feel even stronger about now. It just might not be right for Rolling Meadows, certainly from the outpouring and the clear majority of the third ward. It might look good everywhere, parts one, two, and three, but it might not be the best fit for Rolling Meadows to include the road diet.
Aldrin Budmats, this is your second bite at the apple. Oh, okay. Aldrin Reyes?
If you are putting signage, wayfinding signage on a street where the majority of traffic is going 40 miles an hour just to drive through it, they're not looking at the sign. No, but the majority is driving 40. They're not looking for signs. They're just looking to go right through. So you're kind of missing the point for signage, right? We want to slow traffic down so people are actually going to the places that they're looking for and not just driving through our city quickly. So that's why it's a part of a comprehensive plan. At least, that's how I understood it.
Before Aldrin Budmats responds, again, we were very respectful during the public comment. We request that that continues during our discussion so that we can come to a consensus here this evening. Thank you. Aldrin Budmats?
Let me make a motion that we postpone the balance of this discussion, that staff has an opportunity to revise this, this plan and come to us with more concrete ideas of how we adopt, of how we adopt something that makes sense in Sections One, Two, and Three without the road diet. If you voted the road diet out, there's certain parts of One, Two, and Three that just don't work. So I don't think it's a good idea that we, we advance forth a plan that's incomplete or illogical, given Number Four is no longer part of our options. And so I, I don't see the sense in, in passing flawed legislation if we know that it's flawed and that it doesn't work. As, as the way staff described it to us, all of the parts work together. So if there's a part that we need to make work and, and it's not, and it's not included any longer, I really think that we need to have something that's logical that we pass rather than something that's illogical because everybody sat here like deer in the headlights trying to figure out what to make work with, with what zoning passed last Tuesday and didn't know exactly how they were going to fit it in. So I have a problem, I have a problem with, and I don't want to not adopt. I, I just don't want to adopt something that's flawed from the very beginning. So I make a motion that we, we, we close debate and we, we, we hold off a vote until the next meeting when staff can come back to us with something that's more cohesive and more understandable to pass.
A clarification for your motion, is that then to return for September 30th?
Sure.
Okay. I'm looking for a second for Aldrin Budmats' motion.
Second?
Got a second from Alderman McHale.
Can I comment?
One moment, please. So we've got a first and a second, and then this is within the M2 that we've discussed. So from our parliamentarian, if this motion carries, then do we return or will move forward with the agenda?
You would move forward with the agenda. So what's on the table now is a motion to postpone to, to the September 30th meeting so that staff can reconfigure M2, revising Sections One, Two, and Three in that Kirchhoff Road Corridor Study so that it makes sense. So the postponement would be until September 30th, and then no further discussion would take place on Item N.
Okay. All right. At this point, is there any discussion from City Council? Yes, Alderman Veneziano?
So in, in light of that, to kind of reiterate what another alderman just said, it's a piece of paper. Why would we need to postpone it?
Do you have any additional?
You just put that to us. You just put that to us. So because it was not in favor of passing the road diet, everything else was fine with this. It's a piece of paper. I challenge you.
Can I answer that? It's a piece of paper filled, now filled with contradictions because as, as our staff pointed out, it was, some of the pieces were dependent upon Number Four. So now we're going to ask buildings to put themselves at the front of a four-lane road. Doesn't make sense to me. And so I really need, I really need staff to come back with something that's cohesive rather, rather than something that's confusing.
Okay. One moment. So did you, before, did you have anything else that you wanted to speak before we continue?
Go ahead.
Nope. Yep, okay. Aldrin O'Brien?
I'd just like to clarification. This might be more for staff. Like, it allows a future development to go closer to the curb. Doesn't say they have to. Is that correct? Like, I'm worried about undoing all the consensus and all the agreement we had from our previous meeting. We were all in consensus. It sounds like all of our constituents that we've talked to are in agreement with One, Two, and Three. They've been passed. We have money allocated. We just approved earlier this year signage over one of the new bridges saying, "Welcome to whatever it is, Rolling Meadows." Like, they've got Schaumburg and Elk Grove. We've got these things in process where we can't undo them, that we've already approved. So I guess that's my question. The zoning that we just passed about a month ago for the TC, the new town center, that allows a developer to go closer to the curb. If they want to, they can. If they don't want to, they don't have to. Is that correct?
It requires buildings to be built at, at, at the line, so it's much harder for them to be set back behind parking as they are today.
Correct. But it could be a special use, like we've done in previous cases. It allows for it, was my understanding when we passed that.
One moment. So we have a couple of questions here, so we'll allow staff to be able to respond. Go ahead.
Sure. So in, in much of the corridors, commercial and mixed-use development that we have today is within planned developments, and that gives you a lot more flexibility in how you administer these rules, right? So I think two out of the three, maybe even all three, I'd have to double-check the firehouse, but that's, that's not, there's not, not really physical changes there, you know, it's the other two where there's new development, are within planned developments. And so you have the ability to modify those rules for public benefits. You also have the ability to modify those rules because, you know, you're constrained by the rest of the development. Each of those sites is a minority of the whole. But, you know, you're still using as your yardstick the zoning, which you can apply as you want to. The zoning does say, and for those sites that aren't within planned developments, you know, does say buildings are meant to be built close to the street. There's a lot of design guidelines which are a bit more subjective about, you know, entrances facing the street and perking being behind a building. And I think a development that came through looking to do the opposite, I think that development would have a hard time getting a positive recommendation.
Great. Thank you.
Did that answer your question?
It did. I mean, it's, like, it might not be easy, but I need, my perspective is any special use we've reviewed is not easy. That's why it's considered a special use. So I appreciate the confirmation. I'm still comfortable with M2.
Okay. Aldrin Kohler?
If we're going to look at delaying this again, I think honestly, I'm exhausted on the discussion. And if we want to start over, so be it. I don't want to open the door to say, "We're coming back with a new transportation plan incorporated here and just keep this conversation going." I think it's pretty clear where this transportation component is out. If the aldermen and the, my fellow aldermen and older women decide that, you know, they can't make Part B work, period, and I thought I asked that question very specifically, and the city staff said we could make it work. Mr. Kohl, is that correct? We could make something work?
That was my response. I mean, the real question, the real answer is can we convince folks to invest in, in that vision? I can't necessarily answer that.
So you said that was your response. Do you still hold that response that we can make part, the second choice, work to advance the city? Do you believe that? We can have, take Part B? Or do we just scrap the whole thing? I mean, that's what some of our aldermen are now saying, scrap the whole thing and have a good life. I, I don't mean that because we're going to do something. It's just maybe piecemeal adoption and sort of. Is my question clear? Maybe I'm confusing it.
Can you rephrase the question, Alderman?
My question is, can you make, can we, the staff, make choice, the middle part, whatever that is, M2, can we make that succeed and work? Or, in your opinion, is Part B never going to work? We just need to scrap the whole thing?
I'm going to have Alderman, I'm sorry. I'm going to have City Manager Rob Stabile respond for that question because I think it's more global in nature.
Thank you.
Yep.
Sure. So the reason that there's a version in the packet that has the alternative is that we wanted to present to the council the version of the plan that does not include the transportation component in there. Once we adopt this, if, if it's adopted, would staff work as hard as we can to make it work? Absolutely. That is our mission, right? We facilitate the process, and then after we take direction from council, it's our job to figure out ways to make that work. I don't, I wish any of us had a perfect crystal ball to know exactly what development we will see here tomorrow or the day after. I think we would all probably be buying a lot of tickets if we could do that as opposed to sitting at council meetings late at night. That said, where I, the response that I think is most appropriate in this case is that we'll, without the transportation recommendation in there, it's our job to find ways to make that work. And that's what staff will do. And, and so as we developed this plan, we were taking into account both with the involvement and input of planning firms that we've consulted with, traffic engineers, community input, a framework that took a look at holistic approach, which came forward with the recommendation that included the transportation. Respecting also the fact that without the transportation component in there, we could, we, we have components of a plan that we can put in place, but what our community development director is getting to is that it's a little bit different than the original version of the plan. It's, it's not necessarily slowing the vehicular movement down along Kirchhoff Road. It's, it's just a different look and approach. And so whether or not it can work, I, I don't know that anyone can truly answer that question on any plan because I think at the end of the day, plan is setting vision, as I had said before. Will staff work as hard as we can to put in place whatever? said before. Will staff work as hard as we can to put in place whatever the council's vision and direction is for the city? Absolutely. That is our mission. And so I offer that as, as a response, um, to that question.
Thank you, Manager Savo. And I also just want to clarify procedurally what we're looking at here. So if you have, um, a, a majority of the council members that have already expressed their desire for M2, then the motion to postpone will not carry. And therefore we return to M2 and would vote on that. So if you're stating that you don't agree to postpone, that you are convinced that you have sufficient information from staff to be able to move forward with, um, M2, then you would vote no on the postponement. So I just wanted to clarify that, that procedurally, both for the council and for the public that are here this evening and not necessarily accustomed to Robert's Rules of Order for our procedures. So Aldrin Budmats?
Question for staff.
Okay.
Would you want more time to provide a more cohesive sections one, two, and three now that you know for sure that section four is not there so that we have something that's more cohesive to vote on or not? I, I'm not trying to throw the whole thing out. I'm trying to give us something that's cohesive to vote on versus something that's a mixed bag.
So in answering that question, I, I think the thing that's important to contemplate is it really, it really requires us to completely pull apart the different components of this and, and dig into it, which first of all, I don't know that we can accomplish that by the next council meeting. I think we would need additional time to really be able to accomplish that kind of a task. Really what's at the root of the differing opinions amongst the council right now is the question of the transportation. It's the parking, it's the movement of vehicles and how that interfaces with the zoning, the placemaking, uh, you know, the, those components of the plan. Um, if given the time and given that direction, we would take a look amongst our staff, um, using the resources that we have to identify portions of the plan that we think we may need to possibly tweak or come up with a different approach on. Things like place, things like wayfinding signage, um, you know, public art, things of that nature, I don't necessarily think tie into transportation. But land use and development certainly are important components that tie into the way you have a transportation structure set in your corridor. Um, there are mechanisms around that, and, and I think that was a question that Alderperson O'Brien had asked about, you know, a plan unit development has, it gives the city, specifically the city council and the Planning and Zoning Commission, the ability to take under advisement what the comprehensive plan says, but ultimately to say, hey, based on what this developer is proposing, we agree with moving forward with it or not. So to answer your question, Aldrin Budmats, you know, I'm not trying to belabor this, but I think we would need a bit of time to work on reexamining the components of the plan. I think we would need to really spend a lot of time thinking about if there is no parking along the corridor, where will we put it? Because that is, that is a consideration that I think is an important question to ask in a, in a commercial corridor that is going through a period of evolution and development. Um, I think it's, you know, something that's worth noting is the existing conditions, and we've said this from the beginning, and I've, I've responded to this question before, is that as we sit today, there is not a parking problem in the corridor. Every property, commercial property built along Kirtch Offroad is serving the parking needs of the businesses that exist there. That said, with the potential for future development, that brings in additional density, which is what has been envisioned with our zoning, there will be a need for identifying where do people who drive into this corridor that currently does not have bus transportation, is not accessible by train, really requires, it's an automobile-oriented corridor, where will those vehicles park? And those are conversations that we'll have to have as a, as a group as well. Um, that'll be a conversation that we will be having when the Bears Stadium ultimately moves forward and whether or not we want to allow people to rent out spaces on private property or not. There's so many different components that go into development that interface with transportation and parking. And so if there is a, a, a vote to postpone, that would be where we would be spending our time. Now that said, I, I, I do want to make a note of this. If the, if the plan is adopted, as is today, staff will still undertake that examination in order to find a way to make it work. And that was my comment earlier of, you know, I think at the end of the day, our mission on the staff end is to fight for what's absolutely best for Rolling Meadows and to bring those kind of recommendations to council. Sometimes even if they might be out of line with, um, the comprehensive plan vision, but taking into account the development that we might be seeing and opportunities that are coming down the pipeline. And so if there's an opportunity to work on this, yes, we will, we will pull apart the different pieces. We'll take a really in-depth look at, you know, what are the other parking alternatives along the corridor that we can look to and try to work that into the plan. Um, there may be, there may be a little bit of expense and time involved with that because again, it's an amendment to a plan that we've now evolved multiple times. But at the end of the day, you know, what, what I really want to emphasize is based on whatever direction we get from council is, is how we're going to move forward and it's staff's, you know, objective to ultimately make Kirtch Offroad a very desirable place to be. So, um, I, I offer that. And I'm happy to answer any additional questions on that or elaborate further.
Do you have any additional questions or comments, Aldrin Budmats? All right. Aldrin O'Brien?
No, I'm, just to clarify, Manager Savo, that helped a ton. And the question that came to mind that you answered, I just want to confirm my understanding. We are so fortunate to have you as leader, chiefs, Aaron, Glenn, the whole staff. I have no doubt that as council, you would move forward doing the darndest to get this thing implemented or ideas. So just to confirm whether it's postponed, which I'm not an advocate of, I feel very confident and comfortable in my direction based on the feedback. Either if we postpone or we don't, you and the team are going to do their hardest to come back as this would evolve. Is that correct?
Yes, of course.
Thank you.
That's, that's our mission.
Thank you.
Okay. So at this point then, we're going to first, um, have a roll call vote for the postponement. And again, this would have been to, um, hold off on voting, our adopting the plan, having, uh, staff take a look. Um, the recommendation would be that the postponement would be beyond the September date. We would need more time for that. So just to clarify, what would staff need?
I would recommend, I would request a date uncertain at this time with incremental check-ins on status. That way it allows us to provide council updates as we're working on it. Given if we're to dive into the plan, it's hard for me to predict what just current work that we're working through as it is, um, a finite period by which we can come back. But I think with a date uncertain and then updates on progress, I think that would be a way in which we could make that work.
Aldrin Budmats, is that sufficient to modify the motion to, um, from September 30th to the time uncertain?
Yeah. I, I mean, in as much as we're not going to be able to, staff's not going to be able to, to use the plan until they figure out how they're going to use it anyway. I don't see a reason not to postpone it because we're not going to do anything with it until they figure out exactly how they're going to implement it based on how we've cut it apart tonight. So, I, I mean, whether we choose to officially postpone it and, and, and then hear a unified plan of what we're approving at a later date after you've figured out what that is, or if we approve it the way it is, which kind of feels to me to be a little bit broken, and then they figure out how they're going to make a broken piece of legislation work, I, I guess it's still, we're going to still have to have them figure out how they're going to use this to, to, to attract developers to, to properties without parking. So.
Okay. And then to clarify, Aldrin McHale, are you still confident with the, or comfortable with the second for that motion with the adjusted to date uncertain?
I am.
Okay. Thank you. Um, so with that, uh, will the clerk please call the roll? Budmats?
Yes.
O'Brien?
No.
Beniziano?
No.
Boucher?
No.
Reyes?
Yes.
Kohler?
No.
McHale?
Yes.
With, um, three in favor and four opposed, um, the, uh, postponement does not carry. This now brings us back to M2. Um, is there any discussion now regarding M2? Okay. Hearing none, um, will the clerk please call the roll? O'Brien?
Yes.
Beniziano?
Yes.
Boucher?
Yes.
Reyes?
No.
Kohler?
Yes.
McHale?
No.
Budmats?
No.
With four in favor and three opposed, that motion carries and the M2 version of amending the comprehensive plan to adopt the Kirtch Offroad Corridor Study in part, uh, does, does move forward and that is adopted. This brings us to our consent ordinances. We have two items, items N and O. Does any alderperson wish to remove any item from the consent agenda for ordinances? Yes, Aldrin Boucher?
O.
Then this is no longer a consent ordinance before us, so we will, um, look at each item in turn. So we're looking for a motion for, to consider item N, ordinance number 25-00 to authorize the disposal of surplus city property and move it forward to second reading. Is there a motion? Thank you, Aldrin Beniziano for the first and Aldrin Boucher for the second. Is there any discussion regarding moving this ordinance to second reading? Seeing none, the question is, shall the ordinance be moved forward? Will the clerk please call the roll? Beniziano?
Yes.
Boucher?
Yes.
Reyes?
Yes.
Kohler?
Yes.
McHale?
Yes.
Budmats?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, this ordinance moves forward for second reading, bringing us to item O, ordinance number 25-00, which is to grant a special use permit for personal wireless services in compliance with 122-84 at 2121 Euclid Avenue, which is the Circuit Court of Cook County, Rolling Meadows Courthouse, in for first reading. Uh, is there a motion to consider this for second reading? Thank you, Aldrin Reyes for the first and, um, Aldrin O'Brien for the second. Um, is there any discussion regarding this? Sounds like Aldrin Boucher, you wanted to pull this originally, so.
So I had spoken to city staff earlier. I just wanted to make sure with, um, there was some concern from the Starcom, um, radio system, which is what our police and fire fighters use, that if this new tower threw interference with the radio traffic, that the tower operator would be responsible in, um, working to clear that interference. There was just concern that it could cause some interference with our public radio, our use of public radios, especially with it being right at the courthouse.
So the Federal Communications Commission, the FCC, has an enforcement mechanism and a bureau that specifically works on that function. Um, first and foremost, the federal government, the state government, the city also, all collectively focus on ensuring that our public safety radio systems are all interoperable and can, and continue to work even when antennas are installed. And so if there is any sort of interference, we would work through that enforcement mechanism as provided by the FCC to ensure that the antenna is configured in such a way that it is not causing interference with public safety communications in the Starcom system.
Excellent. That's all. Yes, Aldrin O'Brien?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to, uh, also from the planning zoning, I know we have some residents on St. James that are right by the back of the courthouse, um, and being involved in a few cellular ones at the Park District Days, at Kimball Hill and other ones that we have throughout the city. I do appreciate, I believe the young lady here was here from the company and might have stepped out, um, that from a safety perspective, it does meet all requirements. The height, it shouldn't interfere. My understanding it's going to be even five feet below the top of the courthouse. I see heads nodding from staff. Thank you very much. Um, that, um, so from that perspective, I do want the residents to know on St. James, we did hear you confirm the questions and I'm in support of it.
Thank you. Any other discussion or comments from council regarding this item? Okay. Hearing none, the question is, shall this ordinance be moved forward to second reading? Will the clerk please call the roll? Boucher?
Yes.
Reyes?
Yes.
Kohler?
Yes.
McHale?
Yes.
Budmats?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Beniziano?
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, this ordinance moves forward for second reading. This brings us to new business. We have item P, which I need a motion to approve the payment of bills on warrant for September 9th, 2025. So Aldrin O'Brien for the first and Aldrin Boucher for the second. Is there any discussion regarding the approval of bills on warrant? Hearing none, the question is, shall the warrant be approved? Will the clerk please call the roll? Reyes?
Yes.
Kohler?
Yes.
McHale?
Yes.
Budmats?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Beniziano?
Yes.
Boucher?
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, the warrant is approved. We have no consent resolutions this evening, nor mayor's appointments, proclamations, or city's clerk report. This does bring us to our city staff reports. And as a reminder, there are no discussions during the staff reports. For community of interest, I'm deferring to City Manager Rob Savo.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, before jumping into some of the events, if I could take a moment, I just want to extend a thanks to our community development team. Um, the role of city staff is to both facilitate an opportunity for the city council to have discussions and debate in a transparent manner, but also to implement that, that direction that the city council provides. So, um, a significant amount of hours and effort have gone into the planning process by our Assistant City Manager and Community Development Director Glenn Cole. We're joined here tonight by our Deputy Director, Jordan Alina, and our Planner, Rob Savage. Um, between public engagement events and, uh, attending late-night meetings, there's a significant amount of work and effort that has gone into that. Additionally, I want to thank Alderpersons McHale and Reyes for their involvement with the Steering Committee as well as the Planning and Zoning Commission on their work. Um, I know that these kind of considerations are, are never easy and they involve a significant amount of perspective and, and conversation. But, um, I, I just wanted to recognize that there was a significant amount of work and effort that went into the process behind how we got to, um, the planning discussion that we had tonight and recognize the team for their efforts in doing so. That said, um, identified, I wanted to bring a couple of different events that are coming up. Um, this weekend, a new three-day event with bands, brews, and family fun and a taste of Rolling Meadows will take place this weekend on Friday through Sunday, September 12th, 13th, and 14th. Featured music will include The Taylor Experience, High Infidelity, Seventh Heaven, How Rude, and In the Sticks. Fun-filled daytime activities include an inflatable park, market vendors, yard games, fishing, and bag-o tournaments, bingo under the, bingo under the beer tent, kids crafts, and more. Event partners include the city and the Park District with Rep's Place as a major sponsor. Check out cityrm.org for details and get ready to celebrate the city's 70th in style. The Hometown Hoedown Fall Fest will take place on Saturday, October 4th, in Kimball Hill Park. We welcome live music by Buckle in the evening from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. with food and adult beverages served throughout the day. From 2:00 to 6:00 p.m., families can enjoy free hayrides, petting zoo, pony rides, crafts, games, square dancing, and line dancing. Celebrate the fall season country western style with the city of Rolling Meadows. Also happening on Saturday, October 4th, is the annual Rolling Meadows Public Works Document Destruction and Electronics Recycling Event from 9:00 a.m. to noon at 3900 Birdnick Street. This event is in partnership with the Solid Waste Agency of Northern Cook County and residents from SWANC communities are eligible to participate. For rules and regulations, please see the website, their website at SWANC, that's S-W-A-N-C-C.org. The Human Services Department cordially invites residents to attend a special luncheon for a wonderful cause at 11:00 a.m. on Tuesday, October 7th, at Meridian Banquets here in Rolling Meadows. Help build the Hope Fund, a Rolling Meadows nonprofit organization that provides emergency financial support to local survivors of abuse. To attend, please contact the Human Services Department by calling 847-870-2695. Rolling Meadows veterans of all ages are invited to attend a complimentary Veterans Dinner on Friday, November 7th at Meridian Banquets at 5:00 p.m. This annual event celebrates the city's veterans with a four-course dinner, a veteran gift, live music, and more. We are pleased to announce that our keynote speaker this year will be esteemed Major General James H. Mukuyama Jr. All veterans are welcome to bring one guest. Registration is due by Friday, November 1st to Assistant to the City Manager Lori Cisak by calling 847-870-9005. That's it for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The September 16th, 2025 Committee of the Whole Meeting Draft Agenda has been, is not available because it has been canceled due to a lack of agenda items. So we'll see everyone back here on September 30th. Um, and just as a reminder, the city council meeting is moved to September 30th, a week later due to the Rosh Hashanah holiday. Um, the new business report is also in the packet. If there are any questions regarding the report, please contact Assistant City Manager slash Community Development Director Glenn Cole. At this time, are there any matters not on the agenda this evening that the council would wish to discuss? Yes, Aldrin Boucher?
Really quick. Um, the library had a fantastic 65th anniversary event, uh, over the weekend. They gave away lemonade. They had a Easter egg gem hunt. The kids had a ball. It was a great turnout and it was beautiful day to be outside of the library. Um, the library is meeting tomorrow where they are going over their budget for next year and making a final vote on the consortium, which will help bring more materials, uh, quickly available to the residents of Rolling Meadows. So if you have any questions, you can share at the library meeting tomorrow.
Thank you. Are there any other matters not on the agenda this evening? Hearing none, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
Moved.
Thank you, Aldrin O'Brien for the first and Aldrin Budmats for the second. Uh, looking for a voice vote on this. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it and this meeting is adjourned at 9:28 p.m. Thank you, everyone.